Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order at six o'clock. I need a mover and a seconder. Okay, Bill Morton and Dean Grant. Now therefore be resolved that the February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of council be called to order at six P M. And everyone is in attendance. And form has been achieved. Since we have a couple of members in the audience today for the Ontario Building Code Information Session. In order to allow questions from the floor, we will suspend the procedural bylaw. For item eight point two, in order to allow other people to speak in the audience. All those, any questions? No, all those in favor? And that is carried. Next item on the agenda is. The approval of the agenda itself. You were the seconder, councillor Latimer and councillor Madison. Sorry, Bill, I got you both at the same time. Now therefore be resolved, the Council for the Corporation of the Municipality of Calvin hereby use the agenda circulated, all in favor. Carry declaration, sorry. Yeah, any declaration of pecuniary or conflict of interest to be declared? None, so moving on. Approval of the previous minutes moved by councillor Morton, seconded by councillor Manson. Now therefore be resolved that the minutes for the regular meeting in January, the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five and February, the third, two thousand and twenty-five be approved as presented and circulated. Are there any changes? None, all those in favor? That motion is carried. So delegations to council, we have none. And we'll move on to business arising from previous council meetings. Six point one. Resolution. I need, this is on the forest fire management renewal agreement. A mover and a seconder, that is Mr. Morton and. Mr. Manson. If you remember, this is the agreement we brought forth to council last time, but there was a discrepancy or disagreement on the map. Map has been presented, has everybody had a chance to peruse it? Yes, yes. All right, so now therefore be resolved with the council for the corporation, the municipality of Calvin, approves the bylaw. Twenty twenty-five dash zero five being a bylaw to accept the forest fire management renewal agreement. For a five-year period beginning April the first, two thousand and twenty-five, with a review prior to March thirty-first, two thousand and thirty. This is read and passed in open council on the eleventh day of February. Twenty twenty-five, all in favor? That motion is carried. Next item are the consent agenda items. Mover and a seconder, councillor Grant. And seconder is councillor Manson. Now therefore, well, first of all, are there any items in the consent agenda that anyone wants to bring forward at this time?
Eight point eight, wasn't there something in there about the creating a landfill committee?
No, that.
Oh, sorry.
The consent agenda is item seven. Just one question. I did mention to the C A O that there was one I was interested in, which was the long-term healthcare one, but she has advised me that we have. Submitted an application similar to that already to the appropriate government. Right, yeah, a while back. So since there are none to move forward, therefore be resolved that council for the corporation municipality hereby accept the consent items as presented. All in favor? Carry. So now we're on to item eight, which is administrative matters. The first item is the interim tax due amended. Just to discuss this motion, I need to move in a seconder, that is councillor Morton and councillor Manson. At its January, the twenty-eighth, the two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of council. Bylaw, twenty twenty-five dash zero seven being a bylaw to provide interim tax rates for the year twenty twenty-five. Council adopted February, the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five as the due date for the interim tax bill payments. Whereas council meetings are open to the public with full meeting packages included. The bylaw referencing the motion is available to the public prior to council meetings on the municipal website. With video recordings of those meetings, including discussions and decisions posted on the municipal website. And the municipal YouTube channel of the day, the following, the day following the council meetings. And whereas staff has brought to the head of council's attention that this change in due date of the interim tax item has caused some concern for a few residents. Now therefore be resolved that council supports staff's recommendation. That for two thousand and twenty-five, interest not be charged on unpaid interim tax bills until after March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Discussion? None, none, all those in favor?
Could we get a mover and?
I did.
Yeah, yeah. And, and to complement. So that motion is carried. So the next item on the agenda is the Ontario Building Code. We, item eight point two, and. I see we have our C B O, the Calvin Building Official here to present. Just to move into the presentation, I'll get a mover and a seconder, that is councillor Morton and councillor Manson. So Shane, thank you very much for, I can address you Shane, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
And you can address me as Richard, please.
All right.
So I thank you very much for attending and we will open it up to questions and I'll get our staff. But if you'd like to make any opening comments, please.
Not really, I mean, what's some stuff in your packages there that talks about stuff over the Building Code Act?
Right.
Which talks about the Building Code, Trump's old municipal bylaws. Building officials to act independently from council and all those type of things, so that's all of the Building Code Act, so. Sure you guys have a chance to read them, so. And go for it.
All right.
Trish does have some questions that came from us. We have no public questions that came in, just a few council members.
All right. Trish?
So. First one is from councillor Bill Morton. If Shane could advise a step someone would need to take, plus the associated costs involved for a development scenario. For example, an older resident owns a hundred acres and has little income. They need to sever the property to sell a portion or portions in order to pay for their debts. But still want to live in their home, is there a way ahead for them?
Well, first of all, anybody that finds themselves in that situation, I feel really bad for. That being said, I don't think this is a really question for our staff, any of our staff. It's a financial thing, we're like, we're not credit counselors. So it doesn't really apply to any staff member for that help a person like this, I mean. If that same person was on and asked me the zoning question about severances, like. Size of, minimum size of a building lot. One point nine eight acres, frontage on a maintained road, thirty meters. The number of severances you can have, you can have three and have to, with one retained, those type of zoning questions I can answer, but. Financial questions for financial advice, no, that's not my department. And as far as the severance goes. The East Nipissing Planning Board grant severances. Any questions about severances should be directed at them, I don't want to give an opinion because I'm just confusing them. So we have two members here on council that are on the planning board. Those are questions for you guys at the planning board.
Absolutely, thank you, Shane. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Trish?
This one's from councillor Latimer. I just won five hundred thousand in a poker game and I have one acre plot on a traveled road in Calvin that my granny gave me. I want to build a four-bedroom house with a two-car garage, but I have never built or been involved in anything like that. Walk me through from step one right to move in occupancy. Yes, I need a well-end septic because I live in Calvin.
So in that scenario, the first thing you want to do is finalize your house plans. Because you need septic approval and septic approval is based on the square footage of your house, the number of bedrooms and the number of plumbing fixtures. So you pretty well have to finalize your plans. And then after that is done, you would go to the conservation authority and apply for a septic permit. And septic permits based on those things I just talked about. You would want to go to the road super and get an entrance permit if the lot can have an existing driveway. All right. The next thing would be to make a site plan. So you'd have to decide where you want the building on your lot. You submit a site plan with the lot, where the building is, all the measurements too, the property lines. Any other structures on the, on the lot for, you know, any accessory buildings. You'd show the traveled road, you'd show the driveway, if the well is there, you'd show that, where your septic be going, then we're all part of your site plan. After you get your site plan done. The next thing would be is to fill out the application for a building permit. So the application for building permits. Are available online, they're also here in the office. They look like this, that you can submit them through email or you can come and get a copy at the office and fill this out. All right? Once you fill out the application. So with the application, you need two set of plans for your house, so your plans. Would show things like elevation plans, which are the view, the front, the back and the sides of the building. The foundation plan, the floor plan, the cross-section. You need energy efficient design, you need HVAC design, you need plumbing design. And if there's engineering required, like you're using a structural slab, then you need the plans with an engineer stamp on them for the structural slab, or if there's. Beam, support beams that aren't covered in the building code require engineering, so then would have to be submitted with the plans. The other thing you have to remember, if anybody other than the property owners doing the plans, you have to fill out Schedule One on your application, which is designer information. When I say designers, not somebody just painting paint colors or design, or somebody that actually does building plans and are qualified through the ministry, they have. A building code identification number, and that has to be on Schedule One for their designer information would include that number. Remember, the only people can do plans other than a homeowner themselves. So your contractor, if he doesn't have B C I N, he cannot do plans for you. Submit your own plans, all right? So when all that's done, you submit that building permit with your plans, your septic approval and your entrance permit. I take a look at them, check for, to make sure that it's code compliant. Zoning compliant. So the code compliant part of it, if you're submitting your own plans, I look at them. If something doesn't meet code, let's say you undersize your rafter, your floor joists, I will redline it and put the proper sizing on there for you. If there's a zoning issue, I would reach out to the property owner and say, you're too close to a property line, you don't have enough frontage or. You're too close to a protected area by the conservation authority, those type of things, and then they have to adjust their site plan. To show, to be in compliance with our zoning bylaws. Okay, so once everything complies with the O B C and the zoning bylaws, then I issue the permit. And the permit is ready to be picked up at that point, I notify the owner, tell him the permit is ready, tell him what the costs are for the permit. And the payment type here, we accept cash and checks only. And the fees must be paid before they, before they pick up their permit. So when they pick up their permit, they have to pay it first, you don't get a permit without paying for it first. All right, yeah, go ahead.
Is all right if I ask a question during the process or? Well, you maybe let him finish the thing and then if you have a question.
Yeah, I don't mind it, it doesn't really matter to me.
I just was going to clarify, because I think it's a really important point is that, and to clarify, is when you, when you're interested in a permit, there's a, there's the process and then you don't, you pay once it's issued, correct?
Yeah.
So if you just inquire about something, you don't have to pay upfront, just sort of inquire, you also fit the scenario, that's why.
Yeah, when the permit's issued, then I said, I let you know that permit's ready to go, I said, and with, when you come in and pick up your permit. I provide you back one set of plans and they're approved plans, and I see they might have some red markings on them for changing some of the things they don't have, right? So that's basically up to that point. So then the next. Step would be, once you start to construct your building. You have to start calling for inspections. The inspections that are required on the building permit, which is what their building permit would look like, the copy you would get. On the site, there's little boxes and shows the mandatory inspections, I will check the ones you're required to do. You call whenever you're ready for that inspection. So the first inspection on most cases, when you're talking about a house, would be. Before you pour the concrete, so your footings or your engineered slab, whatever the case may be, before you, after it's formed up. I come and look, make sure it's sitting on undisturbed soil or well-compacted soil. That's your first inspection, you just go down the list. Once you're, as a different stage of construction are inspected, the last two inspections are with you for occupancy and final inspection. Occupancy and final inspection can be one and the same, or they may be two different inspections. The building code allows you for, if you're not quite done your house, but all the certain requirements, you can get occupancy, but over getting a final inspection. So to get occupancy. You require all the health and safety requirements to be completed, so smoke alarms, guards, railings, landing scares, the whole type of things, health and safety stuff. Your HVAC system would have to be complete. Plumbing system would have to include cold and hot running water, a sink, a tub, shower, toilet. And a kitchen sink, those are requirements before you get occupancy. Or plumbing. The landscaping would have to be done, and when I say landscaping, I'm not talking about planting your shrubs, I'm talking about the grading away from your building. So they have a positive slope, so the water doesn't come back towards your building, water frost causes all kinds of problems. You need to provide me with an E S A certificate of acceptance, that's from Ontario Hydro, Electrical Safety Authority. You need to provide me with a substantial completion or a final completion from, for the septic system, from the North Bay Madam of Conservation Authority. You know, water sample showing you have potable water, so your water is drinkable. So you take your water sample to the Ministry of Health and they come back and, you know, see that report. And if you have something for wood solid. Like a wood fireplace or whatever, you need a wet inspection, I would require that as well to get occupancy. The final inspection means everything's complete before you get a final inspection. The permit stays open until you get a final inspection. Process.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, very thorough. Appreciate it.
And just a question for me, because I'm in the office, people think that you're only here on Wednesdays, but would you? Give out Shane's phone number, we return the call four days a week, I think you work, and all those?
Three days a week, but I mean. And a guy that was in the building trade for years and knowing, dealing with occasional building officials. I will answer questions Mondays and Fridays when I'm not working, if I get a text or a phone call, I will answer them.
And emails also throughout the week, and when you're picking up the building permit, it's here at the desk, you don't need to be here, we transact. But then people will typically have met with you at least one time before they get that permit, usually with people in person.
Quite often, some people, I just deal with emails and stuff and then I get their application for a permit.
Thank you, that was very thorough, and councillor Grant?
Just to, you know, it's a public session, we're just trying to, you know, have as much education as possible. When you're in, you're in the office on Wednesdays, but sometimes you're on inspections as well, so if people call in advance, they can schedule a time to go see you if you're in the office.
Absolutely, usually tell them to make sure, if they're coming in to see me, to call first order, we'll set up a time. And that way I'll be here.
Excellent, and I must say, I've heard a couple of comments from people in township saying how. Fairly unreasonable you've been in dealing with them and getting inspections and getting information out there, so it's very positive.
Oh, I really got this. I mean, again, yeah, like that's, anybody I've dealt with usually has never been around them, except it's somebody that doesn't want to follow the rules and then sometimes there's a conflict, but.
All right, thank you. Trish, do you have any other questions?
Next one's from Mayor Gould. What resources are available for understanding local building regulation?
Okay, so for resources. The number one is to reach out to me, that's, because they always talk about the authority having jurisdiction. In this case, it's the chief building official. So anybody that has building questions, that's who they should reach out to. There are, you, the O B C, the Ontario Building Code is available online, as of last year, it never was before, but it is now. You can Google Ontario Building Code twenty twenty-four and you click on twenty twenty-four, Ontario Building Code, volume one. And the whole building code will come up for you, if you're interested in reading the building code.
I think if, just as a comment, we'd probably be better to reach out to you than to try to read through the entire act.
Yeah, well, again, there's the building code right there, both of these books, the Ontario Building Code, so. It's not asking you to come up with on, when you, when you Google the building code, so.
Yeah, so I think if they're available as a resource, that's probably an easier resource than reading through that online.
Okay, so the other resource would be the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and most questions directed them, they'll say. The authority having jurisdiction, which is back to me.
Right.
The O B O A is the Ontario Building Officials Association. You can reach out to them, but again, same answer normally is the authority of jurisdiction, which is me. If you have a dispute with the building official, you can appeal to the. The Building Code Commission, and there's all the process, it's a legal, sort of a legal. Situation and you can appeal to them, if you don't like what the building officials telling you.
All right, thank you, thank you, that answers my question, yes?
And all of the applications and the link to the building code is on our website also, so the application that you received.
Yep.
Just want to further that if I can, there's a few guides here that are in our package, like if you want to add a second unit, there's a link. There's a few other links and those would be available online or through you as well, if people were interested in something specific, like building a second unit or something. You know, we have the, I guess they've been meeting minutes as well.
Yes.
Also, you know. If people wanted, you know, access to these links and these guides, Shane, you could steer them in that direction as well.
Yep.
All right, Trish?
Next from councillor Grant. I'd like to get some recommendations for, for council on how we can make. The building process easier for people interested in building. Where would be through zoning, A, structure, A, whatever is in our control, or B, is there any suggestions outside municipal control that we can also advocate to the province?
So when it comes to building, the only really control the council would have is zoning and the fees that you charge for permits. You don't have a whole lot of other. Things you could actually change. As for something outside the council control. If you're thinking about lobbying the ministry for to change stuff. The one thing I probably suggest is maybe some standardized pre-approved plans for houses for simple, simple designs. It's something that Patmo Cameron has been lobbying and they've had quite a bit of support from other municipalities. So what that would look like, and then again, I don't know, because it's only, it's only a suggestion, would be. You could go on to the ministry's website and download a set of plans and they'd all be pre-approved, so. Your HVAC design, your plumbing design, all that would be in that package, and you could just submit that to the building department and it would just be approved because everything's there. So it's just something that makes it easier, more affordable, and I'm talking about simple designs, right? So because there's so many different designs, different variables, it's impossible to cover everything, but it's just for smaller, simple designs. Something that might be, you know, the ministry could provide.
Excellent, we did actually support the Patmo Cameron.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we did support that via council, and, and you're right, that, that would be a simplification if there was one set of plans. Yeah, just an option to that question, and that, I'm sorry, I'm jumping out of the queue here a little bit, but. There are so many different odd house designs now coming up, people talking about pressed earth. A new one that just was announced was. Plastic bottles compressed into building materials. How, how do you cope with all of that?
I mean, okay, so the building code basically covers standard building practices.
Right.
You get into these straw houses, some of the things you mentioned, anything like that requires engineering.
So you'd have to hire an engineering company?
Yeah, because when you submit those plans to me, they would have to come with an engineer's seal.
Got it.
Because it's not covered in the building code, and he's not covered in the building code, requires engineering.
Gotcha.
So your tire houses, all those type of things, right?
So that would be up to the person wanting to build the house.
Yep.
To find an engineer, and they would have to be a certified.
Yes.
P N G, who would then.
Yep, and you'll put a seal on the, on the drawings and they submit them.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to get, come for Grant, I didn't know I had a question.
All right.
Okay, so still with councillor Grant. I'd like to help people interested in building overcome the knowledge gap that exists. Often I've heard residents that are unsure of the regulations should simply cancel projects for that reason. Does our municipality have F A Q available? And could we adopt clear examples of the process for various projects people may have? For example, a guide to building a deck or a woodshed, or the process with estimated timelines, or in a cost laid out for a single detached home construction?
Okay, so as far as the information gap, I would strongly suggest people reach out to me. That's probably the best. I mean, I always answer questions, if a question about the code, what you need to do, I can guide them through it. And again, we talked about, even though I'm here only Wednesdays, again, I'll answer those questions anytime through the week. Municipality does not have an F A Q available. But we do have sample drawings on the website. There's grads, there's a sample of grads, a sample of addition, a sample of a basic house. So they're there, as far as decks and stuff, I have some literature here in the office that I can provide people. Again, the internet's great, if you want to know how to build a deck, suggest you can YouTube almost anything and they'll show you how to build stuff. I mean, for Calvin to put that on their website. Again, there's lots of information available out there.
Right.
The last part of that question was about costs and whatnot for a basic home, I think it was. Again, and we just talked about, there's so many different variables when you build, I mean, there, you can spend a hundred grand in your bathroom if you want to. I mean, it's, it's just really hard to answer a question like that for timelines, the cost. I mean, I searched up the cost, what they figure in Ontario for per square foot right now is around three hundred and twenty dollars per square foot to build. That would probably not include septic and wells, because that's based on municipalities that have infrastructure. So you'd have to add that on to that as well, so you can see it's fairly expensive to build.
Absolutely. Thank you, good, that's, yeah, absolutely, and I mean, it's coming forward again and again. That you're the resource, and I think that's the one point we want to drive home here tonight, is that. Anybody who does have a question, or they're unsure, call.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's.
And right down to the point where, do I need a permit for this? Just call me, I'll answer the question.
All right, third one from councillor Grant. I hear frequently that people are looking to develop, that are, sorry, for people looking to develop. That they are looking to do so in unorganized. that they are looking to do so in unorganized township. Unorganized townships have drawbacks, but when it comes to building and development, they may provide much friendlier environment. What are some of the ideas to better align our municipal municipal regulations with that of an unorganized township to make us more desirable for development?
Well, I guess I'll start off by saying the unorganized townships. When you build an unorganized township, you're still required to build to the building code. The only difference is is that there's nobody there to inspect it. Make sure you are building to the code. But the point is, you're still can be liable if you ever, you know, that building changes hands. Because you're supposed to build on the code, so if you sold it to somebody and it wasn't built on the code, they could come back after you for liability for not being built to the code. I don't really know what you could do to align more than organized areas. All this stuff is mandated by the province. The building code is mandated. A lot of the stuff, I said, you really have no choice on. It's not the municipality that mandates it, it comes from the province. The only really way to align yourself with unorganized area would be to disband and unorganize your township. That's about the only answer I could come up with. It's far as it goes, like the process, like no one likes getting building permits, no one likes paying fees, no one likes having someone come and inspect their work, but it's just all mandated by the province. It's something you have to do if you're in an organized township.
And if I can just address that, I do know of some people in an unorganized township who are filing a complaint against a neighbor who built a home in an unsafe manner. And I guess people move into an unorganized township and think, well, there is no building code, so I can just do what I want. But if you happen to have a neighbor who is is going to report to, it's it's not gonna be.
Yeah, and again, like I said, you're open yourself up to liability because you are required to build to the building code even though it's unorganized.
And and then there's no one there to answer the questions of, did I build the building code?
Exactly. So and the last part I would say is the I think the reason why people wanna build our our unorganized townships is because there's very low taxes in unorganized townships. And people don't like paying taxes.
Good question.
Sure, absolutely.
You build in an unorganized township.
Yep.
Do you still need an electrical inspection?
If you're absolutely, if you're hooked up to the grid. You actually need electrical inspection for a matter of life, even if you're running off a generator or whatever.
Do you still need a permit for the conservation authority for your subject?
Yes. But and here's the but is that the reason why people get septic permits when they're in an organized township is because I won't issue a building permit until they do. An unorganized township, there's no billing permit, so in reality, you could do your own septic without a permit. But again, you're open yourself up to liability. The conservation authority catches you, there's gonna be a fine and you're gonna have to do it right, so.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Last other questions from Councilor Manson. Generally speaking, if a resident wanted more living space, is it more cost effective to attempt to add an addition to an existing home? Or add a separate standalone living space? Can you comment on the pros and cons of each?
Well, again, there's so many variables. It's almost an impossible question to answer. I mean, there's the things you'd have to consider is the type of existing, the foundation of the existing building, the type of construction of the existing building, the HVAC system on the existing building, which side of the building you're gonna build on. All them things would affect the cost. So I don't know. Addition still have to be built to the building code regardless of the existing building, whether it's insulated or not insulated. The addition part has to be insulated and built to the building code. So I don't, I don't really know which way I'd recommend somebody to go, a standalone or an addition. Like I said, there's so many variables that have to be a case by case basis. So there were questions for a contractor, a question for a building supplier place to price out stuff. The one thing I will say, the advantage of a standalone building would be your costs are easier to predict. Or in addition, you can run into all kinds of problems and have extra costs that you don't don't expect. That would be the one advantage I would say to standalone.
Castle home.
I don't even go there.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
From your experience, what is the most the fourth type of structure that someone could purchase and install or build to house an extra person or people on their property? There seems to be a variety of options on the market from tiny homes to park model trailer. Is there an option that you have seen that seems to be most affordable or simple?
And again, that's a hard question to answer. I'm not a contractor. There are single wide modular homes that are fairly reasonably priced. And they're probably simple for the reason that the manufacturer provides you with all the information you need for a building permit. The thing you have to remember for modular homes is they have to have one of the C S A standards on them. There's the Z two forty point two point one is the one standard. Or the other accessible acceptable standard is an E two seven seven. It has to be one or the other in order for you to use it as a permanent dwelling. So if you say a park model trailer, you cannot use a park model trailer for a permanent dwelling. It has to have one of those C S A numbers on it. All right. And the other thing you have to remember is it has to be designed for zone two. So they have degree days. So it's your temperature, your average mean temperature. This part of the country is zone two, so you have to have a a modular home that's designed for this area. So you can't buy a modular home in Toronto designed for zone one and use it here because it's not insulated as well, so we need them insulated here.
Yeah, interesting.
All right, so if you're ever looking at modular homes, make sure it's designed for zone two. The most cost effective thing to build, I think, would probably be just a rectangular bungalow with a straight roof on it. I would say that would be the most cost effective thing you could build. Tiny homes. Bit of a swear word in the building community for building officials. The true tiny home on wheels, you can't use it as a permanent dwelling, has to have a foundation or the building code, and it has to meet all building code requirements. Some people think the building code restricts the size of houses. It does not. There's a minimum standard for rooms, combined rooms, but the building code does not restrict the size of dwellings as long as you meet those requirements. So basically, the smallest home you could build in the building code would be around two hundred square feet. Which is a pretty small. So it's not the building code restricting the size of homes, normally zoning bylaws. Calvin used to have a zoning bylaw here, said it has to be eight hundred square feet minimum size of a dwelling. That is no longer in our zoning. So you can build a house two hundred square feet and up and meet the building code.
Interesting. Thank you.
Okay, last question. What do you think ways people can use their property for housing? What are a few of the main obstacles that are residents commonly run into? Are there particular building code items that show up regularly? Zoning issues? If you could waive your magic wand and reduce or eliminate a couple common barriers or issues Calvin residents face when building, what would they be?
Well, the biggest biggest obstacle that I see is the affordability and the property tax be pay after they build. That's the biggest, the biggest thing I see. As far as building code issues. The one thing is that you need to hire somebody to do your energy efficient design, because most people can't do that because the compliance packages for energy efficient design, there's a whole bunch of them in the building code. Pick a chart and it's based on your heating appliance efficiency. Once you figure that out, you went to, there's six different options in each chart for so it's pretty confusing. Once you pick a column, you have to stay in it. So it talks about the energy efficiency of the windows, amount of insulation in your attic, amount of insulation in your walls or your basement underneath your basement floor. There's all different compliance packages. So you pretty well have to hire someone to do that. And your HVAC design is HVAC stands for heating, venting and air conditioning. The heating, you have to size your heating appliance and that's based on heat loss calculations. Like no homeowner could do that. There's a program you have to enter for heat loss calculations. Windows, the direction of your windows, there's a whole bunch of criteria that goes in there. Costs tens of thousands of dollars for that program and it spits out your heat loss calculations. So you have to hire somebody to do that. So that would be, I would say, the building code issues people have is those two things because they have to hire an outside source to do them for them. I don't really see any zoning issues that really becomes a problem in Kelvin. Our zoning bylaws pretty standard for the area. I mean, it talks about setbacks from property lines, you know, frontage, those type of things. Things we don't have is we don't have a minimum size of dwellings I just talked about. We don't have site plan control, which some municipalities have site plan control, which says you might not be able to cut that tree, you may have to cut that tree because it's too close to your building, where you're placing rocks on here. It can get really detailed. We don't have any of that. We don't have development fees, which some municipalities have some big development fees. We don't require a survey. So when somebody has a lot and they wanna build on it, they require you to survey to mark your property lines. That's part of the site plan is when people submit a site plan, they're telling me that that house is selling that spot on their lot. If there's an issue after and they find out they're on their neighbor's property, it's on them. It's their responsibility to define their property lines. I don't survey, I don't measure. They send a site plan. I look at the site plan, make sure it complies with their zoning regulations. All right. The other, the only other thing I can see with zoning is the M D S from pits and quarries. It can be an issue. But a lot of that's been addressed in our last zoning. For the simple reason is that the ministry put a bunch of overlays for M X zones on residential lots. A lot of people even know that there. And when them overlays are on there, you have to abide by M D S, minimum distance separation from them areas. Seventy meters for a pit, three hundred meters for a quarry is a minimum distance separation you have to be from them. But in our last zoning with fighting with the planner, Cindy and myself and Jason fought with the planner for a long time and finally convinced them to remove a lot of those M X overlays on property. So most of the M X zones now are actually licensed pits and there's nothing you do about them. You have to be those M D S away from those licensed areas.
Great, thank you.
One more. Can you speak to our building permit fees compared to, because we just did this and that's next on our agenda, actually?
Yeah, so the the fees in Kelvin are, if not, they are the cheapest in the whole area. So the building fees are really reasonable here in Kelvin right now.
About those fees, the first fee is five hundred dollars for an unpermitted building. I didn't, what does that mean, an unpermitted building?
That means if you build without a building permit, there's a fee of five hundred dollars up to fifty square meters and thirty dollars for every.
Fine then, if somebody.
It's a, it's an administration cost for some reason that we have to go chase after these people, send them registered letters and, you know, if they don't comply, they may get orders to comply, could end up in court. Okay, so it's sort of a deterrent for people not to build without permits.
Hey, thank you. And our fees are not, I mean, I've heard of some municipalities that are five times.
Absolutely, absolutely. Calvin's fees are, I said, if they're not the cheapest, they're one of the cheapest in the whole areas.
Any other questions? I just, we we suspended our procedural bylaw to allow the audience to ask questions that they have for this one item. Are there any questions that you folks would like to bring forward?
Probably quite a few. Like everything he said, I'm just more interested in like garages and shops. First thing is, I have a cousin that's thinking of relocating his business from Alberta back here. Is there different rules if it's gonna be commercial rather than just a residential shop?
Good question.
Not necessarily, no. If it's a commercial shop, obviously you gotta reuse all your property to commercial if it's gonna be used for that that case. But the actual building part of it, you really know the difference in the building code.
Okay.
Unless you get into a part three building, which is over six hundred square meters or over three stories in building range.
Okay, I was actually talking to a contractor that built a lot of places around here and he was saying that if it was gonna be a business or was a you would require soil samples and a bunch of other things as opposed to if it was residential?
Again, it depends on the building and house design, right? So I mean, if it's a slab on grade.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could have to do geological studies for to make sure the ground underneath is is solid enough to support it.
Yeah.
Especially if you're some kind of a steel girder building so that you have point loads.
Yep.
Could make a difference. Again, every building is is unique and so you have to look at, you know, like it's can't answer your question or show me, you know, what you're finding on doing and the plans.
A pretty good idea. I know he used to build point load structures in Alberta, so we'd probably be looking at that most likely.
Yeah.
If it ended up being too expensive, then he'd probably go to slab on grade.
Yeah, well, especially when you're into point loads and you're into engineering too as well, right? So a lot of these commercial buildings come with their own set of staff drawings, their engineered drawings already.
Yeah.
So, yeah, like I, I mean.
Yeah, he was a partner for the business constructing them, so they had an engineer on staff or whatever that did it.
Yep.
I'm thinking it would probably be in the thirty to sixty range of what he was thinking at.
Right.
Yes, like a kinda like a DeGongi type business out west or whatever.
Right.
You know, building everything from homes from scratch to warehouses to doing finishing work. And I guess for myself, kinda like what Councilor Lattimer walked through of building a house, kind of interesting slab on grade. Garage, shop, storage, whatever. First question would be, there used to be a story around here that they had different I guess rules if it was gonna be farming or something like, you know, if you were a farmer, you could basically pitch up a machine shed and there was nothing. I don't know if that still applies or how it was just a wise tale. The guys did it and didn't get caught.
Yeah, there's there's a farm building code, which is a little different than the Duro Building Code.
Okay.
It it applies to farm buildings.
Yeah.
But it has to be a farm building though. You can't just call it a farm building. So we're talking about if you have a farm or registered farm, then you can build a farm building. I can't have five acres and decide I'm gonna build a farm building and get around the Duro Building Code and go with the Farm Building Code if I don't have a farm.
Okay.
I just, I just wanna say one thing about your slabs on grade.
Yeah.
The commercial residential doesn't really matter since over five hundred ninety two square feet, fifty five square meters.
Yeah.
You're required an engineer slab.
Okay, now engineer just means you have to have an actual stamp set of drawings for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Are those. But not a generic where you print it off the internet and oh, there's a stamp on it. It has to be actually stamped for your building. So your name will be on it and the engineer will stamp your drawings. And every engineer's different, you know, it might call for primer insulation, it might call for insulation underneath the slab, and every engineer is a little different. And all the the saddles around the perimeter in the concrete. Again, the engineers take responsibility for that slab. Not not the municipality.
Well, listen, thank you very much for your question. These are, these specific items are something that we should address individually with the building code official and and he's already mentioned that that's something that he's willing.
Yeah, I think just reach out to you, send me an email, whatever, and I'll answer you back and we can meet here in the office.
Okay.
And that way we can discuss something individual like your building, right?
Does Calvin have an area that's not designated for business or is it just all residential? Like, I'm not really sure. It's not really any businesses here right now, but is that a zoning thing or is that?
Yes, it is a zoning thing and this gentleman is also, it charges on.
Yeah, so just like that. Again, I just read the zoning bylaw, not a planner. But if your property is zoned residential.
Yep.
If you wanna use it for commercial use, it would have to be rezoned. So you apply for a zoning amendment under the process.
And that's in a different section. That's not under the building code.
Okay, so you go to council for that or?
Yes. And council would direct you to the East Nipissing Planning Board, that they're on our website and they can do rezoning applications and advise as to, you know, the benefit of rezoning for for a commercial.
Okay, Richard, just for clarity, that the East Nipissing Planning Board is severances, zoning bylaws. Okay, Richard, just for clarity, that the East Nipissing Planning Board is severances, zoning bylaws are filed by council.
Okay, yeah, so then it would be straight.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
And we do have a zoning plan that does identify certain areas within on our website too, so the zoning plan is there.
Okay, like I remember the old uh, old pit used to be uh, that I believe. I'd be going back years ago, just the other side of uh, where the old train station was, if you go that far back, I guess. I believe that used to be considered commercial, wasn't it?
Yeah, and again, it's one of the things where, send me an email.
Okay.
Describe your property, give me the legal description for it, I'll find what the zoning is on it.
Yeah, no, I'm just, a lot of these are questions my cousin had before he thinks of them.
Yeah, yeah. I get these questions all the time, so I'm thinking of buying this piece of property and they'll tell me where it is and then what's the zoning on it? Those type of questions and what are my allowed permitted uses? Well, a lot of that's on our website too in our zoning bylaw, right?
Well, they already have the property, you just haven't decided what you're doing with it yet.
Yeah, so if he wants to know what the zoning is on it, reach out and I can tell him what it is.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
I just want to add one more thing, just I think it's simple, is you know, when you do, you know, and for anybody that has a property and it's your zone rule. Uh, if you look within the zoning bylaw, there is permitted uses in those zones. So if something that you want to do is outside the permitted use, obviously call the office or or whatever, but it's like, you know, then you may have to uh, change zoning. But there, when we read into zoning bylaw, there was quite a, it was, it was pretty, there was a lot of potential uses in in a rural zone. More so than some other townships as well, uh, but it's it's within zoning by law.
It's pretty flexible and open in council, obviously.
It was.
Any development here would be quite open.
So, sorry, it's just, some things that may be considered commercial might be allowed in a rural zone. But it it depends on the list and I don't have.
Yeah, ops woodworking versus a battery plant or something.
Yeah, 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 it's, yeah, it was very. Home-based businesses, but there's restrictions on them as well.
Don't just assume you can't do it, it would be my suggestion, my suggestion will be look into it because you might be surprised, it might be a permitted use.
Okay.
Right?
Uh, there was something Shane that brought up about five acres for his considerations. I take it that the more property you have, the more flexible you are. So if you have a hundred acres or if you have three or four hundred acres, you can't have a farm on two acres land. You have to get a farm uh, permit or a license or if you're registered as a farm, you'd have to have a number of acres that you're.
Yeah, possibly, I mean, you could have a greenhouse on a, you know, a two acre castle and see the criteria for a farm is you have to produce so much on the farm each year.
Yeah.
And it can be averaged over three years, I think it's seventy-five hundred dollars, but I go quote me on that, thank you. So uh, yeah, so then you can get a farm number and you get tax breaks for that and, but that's the process you have to go with the whole.
Yeah, that's what it means, there is other options for this gentleman.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of that, I'm just looking for uh, the farming thing, I did have a farm number, uh, I haven't done anything in like twenty years now, I guess, so I've done here anything, but you know, if I went that route. But unless it was some big saving to put up a different machine shed, I don't think I'd bother with it again. And the other question were more of like my cousin coming back and he's got business plans, he's not really looking to just kind of build a bunkie and retire. He's.
Oh, your cousin, he's welcome.
Well, like I said, he's already got the land, so.
So, welcome to the neighborhood.
Uh, yes. And and if I may ask, could I just state your name before you?
Nobody knows who you are.
Nobody.
Wayne Brown, I lived here for sixty-eight years.
Right.
Uh, we put in a new home four years ago, we dealt with Shane, went through all these, it's just bringing back familiar stages. Shane is very knowledgeable and very helpful, so and he's approachable, so any questions, he has my endorsement.
Thank you very much, thank you for your comments. Any other questions from the audience?
Yeah, one more comment.
All right.
Just want to say that anytime, because sometimes I surprise myself when I talk to Shane about what you need a permit for and what you don't need a permit for, because sometimes it's astonishing what you do need a permit for. And any question that you ask Shane is free.
Right.
You don't pay anything for Shane until you get a building permit.
Until you get the permit.
That's right, until you get a permit, there's no payment to be received, so I think like it's very well worth reaching out.
Yep.
And and asking any question, because honestly it is shocking and my husband tells me a rat every time I talk to him, so.
I I shouldn't be divulging personal information, but I recently spoke to Shane because we're looking at doing a a small renovation in our house and I didn't know what I needed a permit for. And he explained that if I was just doing the renovation drywall, whatever, I didn't need a a a building permit. But as soon as I got into insulation vapor barrier, then I required a a permit. And I wouldn't have known that that ahead of time. And we still haven't done it yet, so I still haven't replied. All right, is there any, any other questions or comments? Done? Well, listen, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Conrad, is if, any last comments you'd like to make?
Uh, maybe one thing about, there's a bit of confusion over, they changed the building code here about a year and a half ago to the minimum size of a building you need a permit for. Uh, that was strictly for storage buildings that are used for storage only. People thought that you could build a bunkie up to one sixty with a, okay, so the two different sizes is uh, ten square meters and fifteen square meters, so ten square meters for all buildings. Uh, except for storage buildings used for storage only, they can be up to fifteen square meters, hundred sixty square feet. So people think, oh, they changed the building codes, so I can build my deck up to one hundred sixty square feet without a permit? No, that's not the way that works, it's strictly for storage buildings and storage buildings only. All right?
And if you're building a bunkie, uh, and it's under ten square meters, it doesn't need a building permit unless it has plumbing in it.
That's correct.
So if you put a bathroom or sink or anything, then it then it's still.
Yeah, and you build them with plumbing, it requires building permit regardless of size.
Right. Great.
Since we're all about the information, I should add, and as soon as you have pressurized water, you need a conservation authority, you need a septic.
You know, I, sorry, I I know we, I know we had to pass five questions, but I I, when I put in my, I I put in a new septic system probably eight years ago. And we we applied for and obtained a permit and when the, when the fellow was doing it, he said, well, you have so many bedrooms in the house, so therefore you need a minimum of eighty gallons, or is that what it is, or eight hundred gallons or whatever? And then he said, well, if you ever want to put in an extra bedroom, you should go to a thousand. And I said, well, let's go to the thousands, we put the thousand gallon septic system and there is always talk about building secondary homes on your property. And obviously, if my septic tank is built to the capacity of my home, it's not going to be built to the capacity of an additional house, so that's going to require uh, in all likelihood, we, every situation is different. This is going to require a new septic system, it it might.
Yeah, yeah, as soon as you submit the plans to me, you show me you're adding a bathroom, adding a bedroom or you're increasing the size you're building by more than fifteen percent, you need septic review. Then you deal with the市政 authority after that.
And people didn't put in septic tents that were twenty percent in excess of what they needed, so in all likelihood.
You have to upgrade your septic system. And that's a big deterrent too on on additional building units is uh, septic. Because you probably know it's pretty expensive.
I remember. All right, sorry, didn't mean to throw an extra question in there.
Stop, the session's been very informative, yes, please.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and thank you again, Shane.
Oh, you're welcome.
And uh, please uh, feel free uh, uh, to not listen to the rest of the.
Yeah, I know, I'm I'm out here, I'm going home. Yeah, I'll leave it here, I'll grab it in the morning when I'm here, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much, uh, we really appreciated the information and thank you to our audience for your questions and uh, comments. You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the council meeting, uh, will be a while, probably another hour at least, so. Uh, but feel feel free to leave if you wish.
Good day.
Thanks, Shane. Thank you. We'll just leave everyone a couple of seconds to clarify before we continue.
Take it, integrate, make it, please.
I got them on speed dial.
Just, don't say anything, I'm bored.
And it's huge for trying to watch, so thanks for staying, look.
Okay. The Super Bowl is on the weekend.
Start talking, so we'll build a, a small renovation, I thought maybe you're building something for the dog.
No, no, but it's true, I mean, everyone's starting with these tiny homes, but it would be great, except that I'm going to. Uh, all right, so if we can move on to Council Grant. Oh, Council Grant's in here, sorry, I didn't see that. Yeah. We, I believe had a mover and a secondary already, or the um, Ontario Building Code Information Session.
Yes.
All right, so now therefore be it resolved, the council for the preparation municipality of Calvin hereby have heard and received information from building code official Shane Conrad in an open information session. Uh, all those in favor? That portion is carried. Uh, item eight point three amendment to the bylaw, uh, public comment, uh, period. I need to move her to secondary, Council Morton and uh, Councilor Latimer, since I always miss him in the background there. Um, this is uh, what the CEO was just addressing, which is the um, permits and fees. Uh, at its regular meeting on October the twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, council red and approved first reading of bylaw twenty twenty four dash zero sixty-two, a bylaw to amend by law two thousand, sorry, two thousand and nineteen dash zero twenty-seven, a bylaw to establish municipal, municipal building procedures, regulations, prescribed permit fees and other fees is applicable to building and related matters. And whereas public notice has been served with respect to this bylaw, providing an opportunity for the public to comment on the uh, draft bylaw in writing or in person for consideration of the meeting of February the eleventh. Now therefore be it resolved that there was no public comment delivered on this matter. Uh, so.
The carry that you're aware that there's none.
Yeah, okay, so all in favor? And that is carried. So item eight point four is the amendment to bylaw two thousand and nineteen, which is the second and final reading of the building procedures, permits and fees. Bylaw twenty twenty four dash sixty-two, building procedures, permits and fees. So whereas at its regular meeting on October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, council read and approved first reading of bylaw twenty twenty four dash zero sixty-two, a bylaw to amend by law two thousand and nineteen dash zero two seven. A bylaw to establish municipal building procedures, regulations and prescribed permit fees and other fees applicable to building and uh, related matters. And whereas public notice has been served with respect to this bylaw, providing an opportunity for the public to comment uh, in person, um, jeez, I feel like I'm reading the same one over again. Uh, for consideration at this meeting of February the eleventh. And whereas there was no public comment, now therefore be it resolved that bylaw uh, uh, zero, sorry, two zero two four dash zero sixty-two now be read a second and final time. And that this bylaw twenty twenty four dash zero sixty-two come into force and effect on February the eleventh, twenty twenty five. And further that uh, the bylaw twenty twenty five dash eleven being a bylaw to amend the fees and charges of bylaw twenty twenty four dash five four be amended to reflect the adoption of bylaw twenty twenty four dash zero sixty-two.
Good job.
So, uh, all those in favor? Did I not get a mover and a secondary? Okay, mover and a secondary, please. Councilor Madison moves and Councilor Norton seconds, all those, uh, oh, is there any discussion? None will comment, all those in favor? All right, that is carried, bylaw is enforced.
Can I explain just a little?
Sure.
So the first uh, eight point three was in case there would have been someone in the audience, they hadn't until this meeting to bring the public.
Ah, I see.
So if there's no one here, if there were someone here, you would have heard the comment and you could have deferred, depending on the comment, the decision on the next one. Or heard it and passed the bylaw as you suggested.
Thank you.
No public comment in writing or in person as of today's meeting, so you can move forward with the bylaw.
And see, I thought I was reading. Uh, so item eight point five amendment to schedule B, building inspection services bylaw twenty twenty four dash fifty-four fees and charges, um, resolution, uh, so bylaw twenty twenty five fees and resolution schedule. Uh, just, I need to move her to secondary, Councilor Madison, Councilor Latimer. Whereas at its regular meeting on February the eleventh, council adopted the bylaw twenty two, twenty four dash sixty-two being a bylaw to establish municipal building procedures, regulations and prescribed permit fees and other fees is applicable to building and related materials or matters, I apologize. And whereas the fees found within bylaw twenty twenty four dash sixty-two are to be reflected in the bylaw to impose and consolidate fees and charges of municipal services activities and for the use of its uh, property uh, currently bylaw twenty twenty four dashes, uh, zero five four. And whereas bylaw, uh, twenty twenty four zero five four, schedule B, building inspection services found in the current bylaw is now with the adoption of bylaw twenty twenty four dash sixty-two is updated. Now therefore be it resolved, council for the preparation of the municipality of Calvin uh, now hereby approve the schedule B of bylaw twenty twenty four dash fifty-four be amended to reflect the most uh, up to date fees and charges set up in in the bylaw twenty twenty four dash sixty-two. And further that revised bylaw twenty twenty five dash eleven repeals bylaw twenty twenty four dash fifty-four and comes into force and effect on this day, the eleventh of February, twenty twenty five. Any comments or questions?
Would you like some explanation?
Please.
So each department has its own establishing bylaw, so fire department has an establishing bylaw, building permits and fees have their own bylaws with all of the attachments. And as does landfill, but once a year municipal act requires the municipality to review all of its permits and fees in a separate bylaw. So because that we've changed the fees for a building, we now have to change the fees for the permanent fees by law, which outlined all the permanent fees throughout the municipality. So that's why you have two that sound very similar, but they're very different, they deal with different bylaws.
Thank you, and I would recommend that each member of council keep a copy of this particular bylaw handy, because I'm sure you've all been asked questions, what does it cost to rent the hall? What does it cost? And it's all listed in this bylaw. And it's posted online, but I mean, it's something that we should all be aware of.
And so we are working, Anne and I are working on consolidating the bylaws so that we don't have to do so many revisions. We do need to look at the permits and fees on an annual basis according to the municipal act. But that each of the establishing bylaws has fees mentioned in them, we're trying to remove that so that you're not having to amend. We will just refer to the fees and just by law instead of having, you know, seven or eight different.
Well, I, I enjoy, I enjoy reading seven hundred, it's funny. All right, so um, all those in favor? Okay, so that motion is now carried. Uh, item eight point six, phone number, correspondence regulation for consideration, expanding extended producer responsibility for household blue box programs.
Really important.
Yes, I I think I know where this came from too. Um, uh, I need to move her to secondary to read English. Okay, so Councilor Madison, Councilor Grant.
Sure, yes. I want to speak.
Oh, well, there you go. Um. Shall I read this one first or or should we even, okay, I'll read it first. Council is in receipt of email correspondence dated January the twenty third, two thousand and twenty five from phone number entitled, uh, resolution for consideration, expanding E, uh, EPR to the ICI sector. Can I just ask the CEO for, uh, uh, what is the ICI sector?
And that's what they're actually calling it, right, in their correspondence, which you know that we don't like to do, so the expanded uh.
EPR?
Expanded um, producer responsibility for household blue box program in Ontario for institutional sectors.
Okay.
And I'll explain a little bit more before I let, I turn it over to Anne once you're.
Okay, whereas under Ontario regulation, the three ninety-one dash twenty-one, blue box producers are fully accountable and financially responsible for their products and packaging once they reach the end of. are fully accountable and financially responsible for their products and packaging once they reach the end of life and are disposed of for eligible sources only. And whereas ineligible sources, which producers are not responsible for, including businesses, places of worship, daycares, campgrounds, public facing and internal areas of municipal buildings and not for profit organizations such as shelters and food banks. And whereas should a municipality continue to provide services to the ineligible sources, the municipality will be required to oversee the collection, transportation and processing of the recycling, assuming one hundred percent of the costs. And whereas these costs will further burden municipalities finances and potentially take resources away from its vital infrastructure projects. Therefore be it resolved that the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin hereby request that the province amend Ontario regulation, the three nine one slash twenty one blue box so that producers are responsible for the end of life management of recycling products from all sources. And further that this resolution be forwarded to the Honorable Andre Cantin, Minister of the Environment, Conservative Conservation and Parks, MPP Vic Fidelli, AMO Roma Foma. So discussion.
So if you recall, quite a while ago, I hosted or we hosted an information session for all the neighboring municipalities when we brought the company responsible for blue box recycling and identified all of these issues that are in this motion at that time. And we also identified it to be quite an issue because we can't recycle and bring to the recycling depot our own recyclables not too long from now. Neither nor can we accept recycling materials from any business in our community, any place of worship or the ones that are that are here. We don't have any of the others. We don't have a, you know, a school or so none of those organizations are eligible to bring their recycling to the recycling depot unless we, the municipality, charge them to be able to drop their recycling material off. Or that we tell them that they need to find their own way to bring the recycling material to a depot that is not ours.
The depot's really close, right? It's next door.
Yes, there is no, there is no, Sudbury and Muscoca, Sudbury, Renfrew and Muscoca is looking at establishing one embrace bridge, but they have not. So when the province of Ontario has not made this announcement to those who are not going to be eligible. So we, you, as council members of the municipality, will be hearing from all of those who we must then charge. We must then decide whether we are going to charge, where all taxpayers will absorb the cost of those recycling costs when we do accept from those who are ineligible sources, including for ourselves. So Anne's report a little further down the line is going to get into, and we've been talking about this for a number of months now at very different times during council meetings, how this is going to happen. It's upon us now or we need to plan. So this motion from Phonam, I believe it's from Phonam this time, yeah. Does deal with the fact that let's once again keep trying to pressure the Ontario government, whoever issued all deadline to all of us. Many municipalities, including surrounding us, are in this place now where they have to make decisions. So when we talked before about the landfill and unorganized townships using landfill, they also, we need to they are not an eligible source of, so we have a lot to talk about in Anne's Anne's report a little further on, but this is again, I placed it on, not in, you know, up above because I knew that it was important to us to discuss and that we should likely, my recommendation is that we support this correspondence. Now we know that the rate has dropped and nothing's happening in Ontario. It'll take that long for anything to get there. But I think the more pressure that we can continuously try to impart on the government of Ontario to change this, they, it's an oversight. They've been well aware of it for a very long time. We're all still pushing for those ineligible sources in our community. They do pay taxes. They do pay taxes. They do help with the landfill. They do help landfill costs, but we are not allowed to accept their recycling materials in a very short time for now. And Anne will give you the deadline. It's not up to us. So when the taxpayer pushes back, this is not your not your choice. We have to make a decision at council about how we're going to accept, whether you will accept, if at what cost, if any, and who will bear the brunt of that cost, taxpayers and federal or those ineligible sources. So we also have garbage pick up with two of the parks, Kaiosk and the Canadian Ecology Centre and the Samuel, the Champlain Park. So the Ontario government is telling us that we can't recycle our own, that we can't take recycling from public facing campgrounds, from daycares, from places of worship, from our own businesses. And I have been talking about how do we deal with the Ontario government and their programs. Probably shouldn't mix up the Ontario government's recycling at any cost. So this is just asking you to support a motion that's been brought forward by Phonam to continuously put pressure on the Ontario government to stop the nonsense of not allowing our own residents in places of business and ourselves to bring recycling materials to our own depot.
I agree with you completely. And I think that there's a bigger disconnect here than what what maybe the council is aware of. And that is that I would suspect that the majority of the organizations within the township that don't qualify will assume that they're doing the township a favor by bringing their recycling to the township because they figured that we receive funds for that recycling. And that's not the case. Is that correct?
So basically, it's such a big, long story because it was such a long process, like government, it does take a long time. So the government has tendered out the job of the recycling that they're to take over. So it takes away the burden of the cost from the municipality. Because currently, your municipality is paying about half the cost to recycle everybody's material, which is being produced by commercial entities for the consumer. That's how you end up with like electronic fees when you buy electronics or your e-waste fees when you buy oil. Anyway, the government subcontracted that to Circular Materials, who is now subcontracting that to GFL or Miller Waste or Waste Materials, a lot of different entities within the province. Unique to us in the Nord is that we don't really like, the city of Sudbury has their own MRF, which is a material recycling facility. So they have the ability to bring in recycling and they compact it, et cetera, and put it back into the market. Where we don't have that ability in a small municipality and we actually don't sell our recycling to Miller. The residents of Calvin pays to recycle all the material that comes in. We do get a fifty percent amount back from, it's called the data call, and that's a form we would fill out every year and we report the tonnage, processing, et cetera. And we would receive fifty percent back from the municipal or provincial government. So the province is sick and tired of paying us that, I imagine. And they focus back onto, well, who produces this material? Because we've been in a culture of just use and throw, use and throw and recycle, use and throw and recycle. We're forgetting about all the other hours. Anyway, that's another conversation. So there is a loophole in the legislation that says that they don't have to accept any commercial. It's only meant for residential recycling. Which left a loophole that, oh, really? So we're not going to take on because it's subcontracted now, not the province. We're not taking any commercial, institutional or industrial recycling through the municipality's residential capture. So residents are more than welcome to still recycle, et cetera, except we're not allowed to have industrial, commercial or institutional recycling mixed with residential recycling.
Can I stop you for just a second? That agreement that you signed with the organization quite a few months ago identified. So when people are now going to the landfill with their recycling, our staff is now working for that third party.
We're subbed.
Yeah, we're subbed now. So we are not allowed, we had to sign and said, we will not accept recycling material for those, from those ineligible sources. And we then can be fined for accepting it. So it's a big education piece for our own staff also who then need to police essentially who's coming to drop off recycling because we are legally bound by this agreement now that says we will not accept these recycling materials unless we have another way to collect the cost that it's going to cost us. And let me tell you that there are ways, many ways in which they know whether or not we're accepting. You know, Anne mentioned the dollars that we do get back at fifty percent. That comes from a report that I submit that to the government data call that's that gives them proof of how much recycling was picked up by Miller, how much it did weigh, what the tonnage was. They decide, so it's not anything that we can make up or get away from her. There's no loophole for us. We had to sign in blood that said we will not accept our recycling material.
Well, you've answered all my questions with respect to this motion. Does any of council have any questions?
Just a quick comment I want to throw in. I'll make it really quick is, you know, very recently, and it's not just Calvin. So very recently, I was contracted to pick up some trash in North Bay and there was ten bags of cans. I went to Sandown Road, right, to dump. And they rejected my ten bags of cans and I had to drive a half hour to GFL and go over the scale. They charge a hundred bucks a ton, but I had like fifteen pounds. So there's this whole process and it's happening even in North Bay. And it's outrageous and it needs to be fixed because, you know, they're accepting, they're looking to accept trucks over scale. And I'm showing up with ten bags of cans. It's just, it was just, the whole thing's silly. Everyone knows it, you know. But it's a regulation and it should be amended. So hopefully we support it. It's just a real life example.
But further, what makes it more cumbersome is that because we have such little amount of commercial recycling, the municipality is going to be on the hook for and has to be separated still. So we need to have two bins still to collect containers and fiber. We have to pay the rental costs of those bins. Unfortunately, we don't know how long those bins are going to sit there while we're paying rent. As well as how do we track it? Because we can't, we don't have the ability to track roll off bins. And so far, the only two identified MRS that will accept industrial, commercial, institutional recycling is located in Renfrew or Sudbury. So what is the cost to get the recycling material for our commercial entities to there as well?
Absolutely.
Right, so it's, it's a big, big picture where if it goes through, we may have to look at our neighbors because even existing companies that do remove it, such as Miller Waste, are saying, how does it make it economical for us to only come to see you once a year? And to remove that and get it to somewhere else and to get it to Renfrew or to get it to Sudbury where perhaps our commercial entities could be collected as one unit in one of our municipalities and then we all have joint forces to pay for that, what that looks like. And we have until twenty twenty six to get that on a piece.
We're North Bay calendar are already as councillor Grant has experienced, they're already in it now. We all have different start dates.
Well, thank you very much. Are you asking a question or moving your camera? Councillor Latimer? I think he was just moving his camera. I thought, I thought it was on your.
No.
All those to a vote then? All those in favor of the resolution? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much for the information. And it's something I hope residents are aware of as well, which was part of the reason of bringing this forward today. The next item on the agenda is a motion by councillor Latimer. So that is moved by councillor Latimer and I'll second it. So moved by councillor Latimer, moved by Mayor Ghul. Whereas signs on Ontario roadways make it easier for tourists to find local municipalities, attractions and services. And whereas the tourist oriented directional sign in TODS program places signs on Ontario roadway for motorists to find rural municipalities, tourist attractions, operations and services. Increasing awareness of Ontario's tourism attractions, operations and services located off provincial highways and enhancing traffic control through advanced warning of turns, signs, promoting local assets on a provincial wide basis. And whereas there are no signs acknowledging the municipality of Calvin's boundary along Highway seventeen east or west. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to investigate the eligibility of and cost associated with the erection of TODS at both the east and west ends of the municipal boundary. And further that if Calvin is not eligible for TODS, that staff investigate the cost of billboard signage that would welcome travelers to Calvin at both ends, the east and west end of the municipal boundary. And that the results of the investigation be brought back to council for further direction. For discussion, as you move this councillor Latimer, you have any comments?
Just that there have been a number of comments from council and from staff that about the lack of signage on Highway seventeen. Stating that you're entering the municipality of Calvin. And sort of like the weather, everybody complains about it, but nobody ever does anything about it. I brought this motion forward to to solve, fix it.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions or comments from anyone? Councillor Morrison?
I take it this is strictly relating to Highway seventeen, putting signage on Highway seventeen because there's already signage on Mount Pleasant and on Boundary Road. But it's off the highway.
That's correct.
So, okay. But does it say that in here specifically?
Yes, it does. It's east and west of the boundaries.
Along Highway seventeen.
Yeah. Just one thing that was brought to my attention is the logo.
So one thing, Todd's, the councillor Latimer and I can speak when he suggested bringing the motion forward and I brought the Todd's issue forward to him. Todd's are the blue signs that you see. And they're cheaper than installing your own big billboard signs. And so when, you know, he talked about bringing the motion forward, I brought to his attention what a Todd sign is and when it can and cannot be used. In most instances, you will not see a municipality unless you're showcasing, for example, and I've worked with Todd signage in another world. For example, if you're promoting the beach area, you'd have something, you know, the beach with, you know, welcome to Calvin and a nice beachy. What are you promoting in Calvin would go on that Todd sign because it is meant to be a tourism related sign, not a welcome to. But it's much cheaper and they're the blue highway signs that are posted. You see them all over the place, you know. Calvin does have a little Todd sign at the other entrance by Boundary Road. It's a little blue sign that says Calvin that goes in. But it's this big, right? It's not one of those huge signs. We may not be eligible for Todd signage if we can't prove that it's tourism related. So we'd already have the marketing program, how are we promoting? What are we promoting? That's what I anticipate based on my experience that we'll run into with the Todd signage. But when talking to councillor Latimer about his motion that he wanted to bring forward, I said, let's put it in so that we first investigate the cheapest and, you know, the blue signs, everybody recognizes them. If we don't qualify, then let's talk about the big billboard signs. No matter what, there's going to be a five year commitment typically on signage wherever it's placed. With Todd signs, they will, you know, you government places them where the government wants them to be placed. We could get away with likely very close to the boundaries with the other signage and depends on who owns the spots available along Highway seventeen and where they might be. And then if we're not available for Todd signage, you're right, we do need to look at how, again, are we promoting it? Do we promote this now? Do I belong with an old logo or waiting to develop or to, I mean, communications plan for us, but well, I will investigate and get that to you on the cost and eligibility.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I think it's a great idea, fantastic idea. And I applaud you, Councillor Latimer, for bringing it forward. Thank you.
All right. Motion to vote, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, item eight point eight. Didn't it cut us already?
Looks like it.
Item eight point eight, extending the life of the landfill and financial obligations. Just a mover and a seconder, please. Councillor Morton and Councillor Latimer. So this does involve a resolution. So let's, I'm going to open it for discussion first. And it's a fairly lengthy report. And so I'll open it to Anne to go over her report.
I apologize once again for giving you a magazine. However, when Steve Bacon from Knights Pia sold this year, it created a lot of conversation. A conversation that was also A conversation that was also, uh, brought up by councillor Grant as well as councillor Latimer in my past with councillor Latimer as well. Um, Steve Aiken came here, he's an engineer, an environmental engineer, and he told us that our landfill has twenty-five years left of life. Um, twenty-five years may not seem like a panic, but it totally is when you look at the cost. Uh, the purpose of the, the report is to talk about different ways to divert materials from entering our landfill as well as the financial obligation that were required by the public sector accounting board, accounting systems. Um, we were told with the twenty-five years that we do have that, that the closure cost would be nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Uh, the P S A reporting sets in place the liabilities that is on our books. Uh, so what the municipality fiscally tries to prove, uh, to fit, accomplish is by you always save a little bit of money every year so that you have a pot of money at the end. Instead of having to spend a giant pot of money at the end. As well as Steve Aiken had mentioned that it's good to, um, tax those that use it today for the closure of today. And all, all of us as users for the landfill is what's going to clothe the landfill. That's terrible, that sounds. Uh, the municipality was, uh, good at saving money. However, with the new report and using the cost figures that was presented to us by the V D O for twenty twenty-three and the budgeted amount of twenty thousand in twenty twenty-four. And then you take the amount that we need to save in twenty-five years and the deficit would be, uh, that we need to can save an additional eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars a year. That I would heavily suggest be implemented into the twenty twenty-five budget. So kind of a heads up for the landfill budget, budget for the post closure. Um, and even if I am suggesting, it is part of the legislation for the public sector accounting board's liabilities. I think it's a move in the right direction to put us in line with the asset retirement obligations that are coming. Since we have to now start dealing with retire bond obligations for asbestos and our fuel tanks, et cetera. But I think we're ahead of the game on that. I didn't include the, uh, post closure costs and what those costs look like. Um, there is a monitoring program, but just like an aggregate pit, we must put the lands back to the way they were by putting all your topsoil, grass, et cetera. Um, Steve Aiken did this, also discussed strategies with council to extend the life capacity of the landfill, which included the enforcement of clear bags. Or inspection of divertible materials, the compaction, the compaction of materials which councillor Latimer had previously asked a report for in a few meetings back. Uh, not permitting garbage from outside the boundaries of Calvin. Uh, do not allow unsorted loads to enter the landfill, so no divertible material to enter. Uh, the grinding of materials like bulky mattresses, furniture, uh, boats, trailers, I've seen us taken at the landfill. Uh, investigating the extending, of extending the boundaries of the landfill. And councillor Grant also suggested looking into composting organics. So hence the lengthy report. I'm going to get the Coles version. Um, enforcement of clear bags has been included in the bylaw for at least the last eight years, I would say, in the bylaws that I've looked at. Clear bags were was always included in the bylaw that all materials entering the landfill be placed in clear bags. Uh, enforcement is lacking with our staff. However, it is difficult without buy-in, buy-in from our public, buy-in from our council. They need to have the, and there's no enforcement strategy in the bylaw or appeal processes to make it a more transparent, uh, process as well as giving the staff that assurance that we are supporting the bylaw. Uh, the group that came here to the presentation with recycling is a community infrastructure funding group and they have worked with us for several years as municipalities on, um, landfill, landfill and recycling. And they provide a, a very thick handbook on how to soften the blow for your municipality, how to get the buy-in from your public. How to do a soft opening and opposed to like today's the day that we're going to address this. Uh, promotional and educational materials. All of that is listed and I have reiterated that in the clear bag policy. Uh, many municipalities around us have also initiated such policies. And basically it suggests ensure that no hazardous waste is going into the landfill, recycling is not entering the landfill. As well as protecting the landfill attendance as when you move garbage and you don't know what's in it, there could be broken glass. There's been many cases of uh, hands being cut open, uh, hypodermic needles, et cetera. That lists the steps that we can take, uh, to ensure that we get the process moving. Like I said, a, a good soft education process with some hard deadlines, I feel works better for the community. And honestly, about seventy percent of the community is participating and using clear bags. However, there's lots of clear bags full of recycling being thrown over the landfill edge. As well as, uh, a lot of commercial mixed loads are being thrown over the edge which contain massive amounts of divertible material. So we cannot, we can't enforce a bylaw to allow commercial to let the recycling in the landfill and expect our residents to do the same. We have to make sure everything's across the board. Which is going to make it difficult if we need to place bins and not allow recycling. Like you see the trend here. So the government's telling us that we would have to pay for commercial recycling. And how do we make sure that doesn't end up in the landfill? Because there's also legislation that mandates that we don't let that happen as well. Uh, compaction of materials. It, it's, it is a great thing and a great method for to extend the life of the landfill. It switches everything. It doesn't allow holes in the landfill. It actually has many other benefits such as preventing fires because there are no air gaps in the landfill. I don't know if most people are aware, however, a landfill produces massive amounts of methane gas uh, which is contributing to the G H Gs, which contributes to climate change. Uh, the government is now placing legislation on how we can capture those gases. What it looks like, what it costs, uh, what's fortunate or unfortunate, I guess, if the double edged sword is that we're underneath the population rate. Where we're mandated to do something about our methane gases coming out of the landfill. Uh, so one of the great things about compaction, it removes the air out of the landfill. And it prevents that amount of methane gases as well as the organic trace methane gases, but it's like it's such a combobulated amount of topic, right? I did add a couple of photos in there with a little bit of pricing on the the wheel compactor on the right. Um, like I, you can see it was quite expensive, or that's just a skim over of looking at what compactors are and how much they cost. And the other compactor is more for bailing recyclable materials where they would bail it to make it prepared for the commercial market. I don't feel that using a bailing system such as this compactor would keep the compaction. You're still putting squares into the landfill, so you're still not really getting rid of that air as you would with a wheeled compactor. Um, I did indicate in here that a very like conversation has happened with our neighbor, but that could be something that we could look at in future. Um, not permitting landfill use outside of the boundaries. I did speak with the C E O and she did, uh, say that our, um, certificate of approval does allow for the placement of outside, uh,
For lawnmower particularly?
Yeah, just for lawnmower particularly. It's, I think the conversation is more geared to, uh, for instance, allowing contractors to dump shingles that could be from another home outside of our boundaries, uh, because the landfill tipping fees may be cheaper. So say a company comes in to Paton and say, oh, it's cheaper to go dump it over in, uh, uh, Calvin. So, and I have witnessed that happen. Uh, there is processes where you can make it just a bit of a a difficulty to get them in there. There could be, uh, maybe just come in and they got a little permit that allows contractor to dump into the landfill on behalf of the homeowner. There could, there's no fee attached. There could be no fee attached. It just makes it a little more cumbersome to allow those contractors to use our landfill because it is the cheaper tipping fee.
And I'm just going to stop for a second, providing that the homeowner resides in Calvin, because that is only what our certificate of approval allowed. And we're not talking recycling at this time. We're only talking about land show garbage.
Um, not allowing, uh, unsorted loads, so we kind of have skimmed over that topic with the previous motion. Um, a lot of municipalities have sat down and done waste management plans. Look, there we could do, develop a waste management plan where we, and we have the data starting already. Um, we've put the landfill, uh, bag limits on a tablet. So now everything's, all the data is being collected. How many bags are entering the landfill? You may be shocked that over the last eight weeks, the average amount of users is sixty-three. So, and we have three hundred residents. So it's kind of where's two hundred and forty-one people's garbage going? Um, just asking. I do, I do know it's winter, however, so it's easier to save it up because it's not thinking and rank and et cetera. But when seeing that, and Mr. Aiken says that we're using seventeen hundred cubic meters of space. When you jam the numbers, each person is putting in a nine foot by nine foot by nine foot square of garbage in the landfill a year. So when you divide the sixty-three and the seventeen hundred and three into per week usage, like the data's there to start making decisions based on data and the, and using a waste management plan. Uh, also allows us to put some finance with that so we can see our future with our landfill and be able to manipulate the, the funding to get to the end goal that our municipality wants to see with a waste management plan. Um, further, I talk about reduce, reuse, recycle, recover, disposal. Sometimes we forget about the other R, which is repair. Um, stop buying products, products that have so much recycling associated with them. Um, not, it's not that we're just trying to save a landfill, it's about the circular economy. We take billions of tonnage of materials out of the earth and we're putting it all back in the landfills instead of recycling them. That's why you see like programs where if you bring in your iPhone, they give you discounts because they'll take the material out of your iPhone and put it into a new iPhone. There's a lot of culture change that has to happen when we have regards to recycling and landfill use. Uh, grinding the bulky items at the landfill. I didn't have enough time to actually get a good figure to provide counsel, although I've did speak to several of our surrounding municipalities. Most do not because of the cost. It's about a hundred thousand dollars to bring somebody into grind material. Oh, so so it's one of these, right? Is the investment worth the savings of the landfill? Like it's all of these questions and answers that have to be, uh, figured out. It is a great method. It does grind it right down to nothing. I've watched several YouTube videos, like you can put a seedu. That's what I watched, which was awesome. You could put a seedu in a grinder and it would come out to like little wee tiny bits and you throw it into the landfill. Uh, however, it is at a high cost. Uh, I reached out to East Ferris. Uh, they don't currently, uh, utilize grinding. Um, so it would be, like Mr. Aiken said, you could get on board with other municipalities, however, perhaps get lesser costs. Um, I'd have to be more investigating into how close those other municipalities are. Uh, investigating, opening the landfill boundaries. I put a map in the, uh, report uh, just so that our general population could see that we do have forty-two hectares of land where the, the landfill is located. Um, however, opening a certificate of approval could come with the cost as well. Um, nowadays to open a landfill, it's about bringing in material. Uh, compact that material, putting a bladder so no water can get into the water table. And then there's the filtration systems that go into that so that no leachate enters the soils. Uh, our certificate of approval, as I said, was given to us in the eighties. Uh, we've certainly gone and leaps and bounds since then in understanding, uh, the impact environmentally of a landfill to the outside of its, uh, boundaries. Uh, however, uh, Steve also mentioned that we could investigate and what it looks like to have a landfill open. And perhaps if we did spend money to do that investigation, we could be shovel ready for something like that and have an understanding as well as a financial understanding as to what that looks like and how we could budget into that process and into the lifespan of our landfill. Um, thank you councillor Grant. I learned quite a bit about organics because actually I didn't know really anything. So I had to read it, uh, read about it for this report. Uh, there's different methods of, uh, processing organics. You can lay it out on a piece of property in a straight line and then you just keep moving it. Uh, there's air pipes underneath that to give air to it so it rots quicker. However, then you have the methane gases. Uh, there's aerobic digesters, anaerobic digesters, all this equipment, uh, so it makes it quicker. Uh, if you want to sell your organics or screening, there's, uh, several technologies into organics. And I'm not a hundred percent sure if the organics can be processed over top of the landfill. So there may be investigating into where it could be placed within the community and within our municipal properties. And of course, I put a big blurb about all of that. Uh, so my recommendation to council is I think one of the easiest wins and the cheapest win is to start implementing the clear bag system or program that's already in our bylaws. Um, does it create a bit of havoc? Yes, it does. Is it going to create distress for people emotionally? All change does. Um, but we're almost there. Honestly, when you look at the landfill, we're like seventy percent there. It's just about changing the culture for some others. And like I said, I would recommend a soft opening, uh, a promotional and educational material. And then we have like a hard deadline, but that would have to come with a new bylaw being written to give our staff the ability to have ways to make sure this occurs. I think it's a very quick win for the landfill, for the municipality. And I also think when you look at this report that I provided you, like this is just a skim over of all the items that were brought forward to talk about how we could change our way of thinking and how we use our landfill. And that I think that a committee should be formed where it gets more of an open forum for discussion. And they can actually deal with like one individual item in the evening or once a month. Uh, the committee may not last long, one or two years to function so that we can get the sweets management plan and process. Um, I'm that's Dawn and Oda. When you drive, sometimes you always think, on my way to the meeting this evening, I did suggest that one council be, uh, chair and that two, two residents be volunteers on the committee. However, I think it would be beneficial to have the chair, a resident and a commercial, uh, representative just because of the effects of the legislation that's coming down for the commercial businesses in our area. Uh, so that's my spiel.
Thank you very much.
Very, very quick.
Very, so, of course. Um, I, I, I'm going to, uh, fire away with a couple of questions.
Okay.
First, um, there's, there's two parts in your report that, that are really important to me. I, I, I have to say that the idea of the clear bags is, as you say, a quick win. But I think that there's another component that we really have to address here. And that is that, um, I've always been an opponent of, uh, a fine system for clear bags. For the, the only reason is that we're not inspecting the clear bags. And, uh, they are a little bit more expensive to buy. Um, I know it says in your report that they cost the same to produce, but I can give you examples that if you go and buy two point seven five mil black or clear from the same company, it's more expensive for clear. I think any resident would be willing to spend the little bit of extra money. It's not much, it's fifteen percent more, say. Uh, to do that, but there has to be an inspection of the bags. If we're telling people you must use clear bags, we're going to find you if you don't. But we don't inspect the bags, then it doesn't accomplish what we want it to accomplish. So I think that, you know, part of, of the process would have to include a way of actually, when people come to the dump, that these items are inspected before they Rather than a pickup truck arrives, how many bags did you have? I got twelve, go throw them over the edge. And whether they're clear or they're not.
Right.
It's not going to help, so I, I think that has to be part of our processes, we have to. Start an inspection process, just that's my. The second one, it's really shocking to me, for example, I did not know we accepted garbage from Kaiosk. And from the provincial park. And uh, we ran into an issue when we talked to a lot of residents about raising the price. To tw- uh five dollars a bag for a lot of residents to come to the township, and at that time. I thought, well, you know, five dollars is very reasonable when you consider that everybody else in the township has to pay taxes based on. The people who work there, the fees that we have to do, but now if you add in the nine hundred and.
Yeah.
Seventy-five uh, a hundred thou- nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to close the dump in twenty-five years, and then this. Thirty-one thousand dollars a year to put into preserves. This is getting very expensive for the taxpayers to carry other municipalities. Other provincial parks, I, I, it's really something I think we need to look at very seriously. But if we're going to look at it, I think we have to give those other organizations lots of lead time, like we can't just sort of. Form a committee and say, okay, we're not gonna cover this stuff anymore and you guys are on your own, because we all know what's gonna happen. It's gonna wind up in the bush somewhere or, or on the side of the road. So I think maybe one of the very early things that we have to look at doing is, is, is an information program for these outside organizations. Not to say we're not gonna cover your damage, uh your, your, your costs. Or we're not gonna allow you to bring stuff to the dump, but to say that this is being considered at this point in time and you may want to look at other options. So those are my only two comments, and I don't, there's nothing to address here, I just.
And I agree with you, especially when the province is downloading the recycling costs of. Commercial and uniquely for Calvin, the, the province ran entities that we're going to have to deal with, with the recycling, right?
Right.
Like so, there is options, we don't have to pass the, that particular item, recycling onto the taxpayer, we could charge. Or we have to charge straight across the board, uh what don't we let in the landfill, like Kaios Park? It's, it, like a hundred and seven thousand, that's what we currently budgeted for last year for the landfill and. We have five hundred properties paying for that.
Right.
Those properties aren't paying, like you said, the hundred and seven, nor the, the contribution to the one million. To close it, however, they're contributing to the closure.
Right.
Right.
And I just wanted to make another point of clarification, you said we don't want to do this immediately. The committee, because you know, I've spoken about a committee for quite some time now, we do have new residents from our community who are so pro. Uh, recycling, who are pro, uh you know, I did get calls right from new people talking about practices at the landfill. We have since summer, uh when Mars was still here, who was a great advocate for, you know, when we did start talking about how do we. Enforce something, so how do we get people, give them a nudge and how they should be uh disposing of the garbage? We switched from the cars that were mostly in the little cabin to now, you know, as you know, since that time, early summer. Where now we have somebody stopping people so that we can actually track who's coming, how often they're coming. A, a car that gave people X number of bags a year was no good when it was sitting in the little house anyway. And so we have started to get staff to um count cars, to log cars, to look at. This, the kind of garbage, to start talking about, you know, the white clear bag, the signs say at the landfill already, white clear bags are the way. But as Anne said, if staff who are, you know, at the forefront of all these people who are not going to be happy, a lot of them. If they don't believe that council has their back, then why should they do that, right? So council also needs to be in favor of their own bylaws, so that staff can feel empowered to. Carry that bylaw out to, you know, to make sure that that does happen. And the committee, to your point of the committee, we can't just do this, the committee would always bring recommendations back to council anyway, it would not be as a siding factor. And I think it's super important, as I always have, and you know, Anne's agreeing that we do have citizens. Who are in favor of saving the landfill, because this is what this is all about.
Agreed.
And nothing else, right, how do we save the landfill and what measure then, uh can we put into place? To bring forward to council so that we can get there, so that, you know, uh Steve did talk about, we could essentially, you know, land book for the last fifty years. If we did things differently. So that's, that's where we're heading with this, is really uh trying to push that a council uh.
And that's what the resolution states, is that the way, the, the resolution is to create a committee and, and uh, I, I fully agree.
Right, and, and just to continue what Donna said, like. Uh, in the committee function, the function is always to bring recommendation to council, we're not in the function of uh making any decisions. Outside of council, we just recommend our findings to the council, and it would also be exactly like a council meeting, the agendas would be posted. Recorded, the meetings recorded, councils always welcome to enjoy themselves watching those.
I love it.
Excellent question, Anne, are you, you would be part of that committee?
Uh, one hundred percent, I would.
Chair.
I don't wanna say that I'm outside of uh the deputy clerk's position.
No, I think that.
Uh, you see the main in the agenda for the meeting and the material would be provided by me, uh the chair would be a member of council. Uh, and then one member of a resident would be great. And I think honestly, we should invite one of our commercial businesses to participate, just because there's such an impact of recycling. I think it should be a process of application.
Right, the process of application with some clear uh terms of reference for the committee, what the committee's purpose and goals are. And so that we're accepting applications from people who are in line and who are in favor of the terms of reference of that committee.
So I, I have an interest in being a part of this committee, I did express that to Anne. Um, if someone else has a stronger uh desire, I'm willing to step aside, but I, I'm not on any other boards or committees. So I think this would be, for me, a place to uh, uh serve the municipality, something I'm interested in.
Thank you, uh Councilwoman, it's great. Uh, are there any other uh confirmations?
Yeah, I had a, a couple of questions, very thorough. Um, Steve, when he was here doing that presentation, he talked about going vertical with the landfill. Um, and he said that you could go another twenty-five years without a problem, um just going vertical. So, and he seemed pretty, he wasn't, uh, he seemed pretty confident. Um, so then, to me, it would seem that we can, instead of increasing our, our allocation to that reserve. Uh, we could lessen it potentially.
Um, I would not, I don't wanna agree or disagree because the engineer did present council a report that says a twenty-five year capacity. So I got that, he said perhaps you could go up, however, there's slopes that would have to be investigated. Um, and once you start getting up above the tree line, uh you have to somehow mitigate that no litter leaves the landfill site. Because then it is, uh the landfill is outside of the boundaries, so there are some hurdles, however, it is worth talking about and further looking about. Because honestly, I asked the question if he could continually go like up to the moon with garbage. So, but he did stay, stay there, sloping, etcetera, so it is, uh. However, he's the engineer and he did present the capacity report of twenty-five years, so I don't really. Know how to continue that conversation without engaging him more.
If, if I'm not mistaken, if I can interject here, do you also not say that we could do that? But if we started to do the application process at this point in time. We would open the door to possibly changing our existing landfill regulations to meet new current uh regulations. And that would be a discussion that would likely be best to have in, in say.
Three, four, three.
Well, no, even, even longer than that, so that we were closer to the termination of the landfill, so that we could extend it at that point in time, is that?
I think he was implying that we should have a discussion now and consider the cost of that investigation, so that you're able to kind of save a little bit of money at a time. So that you are ready and you'll be proactive.
Now, if, so the second part to that and to answer Council Mattson's question. If we were to put thirty-one thousand dollars aside and in ten years' time decided to. Make this new elevation plan to extend the life, could we use part of that reserve? Because he said it would be an expensive process, a couple of hundred thousand dollars. Could we use that reserve at that point in time towards that, because we're extending the life and we now need that money?
Exactly, uh you would only be able to extend that reserve if you can get that capacity report to change, because the capacity report is what. Puts you in the position of being legislated under the asset.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't explain myself.
Yeah, but you can take them on your council, you can put it wherever you want.
No, no, but what I'm saying is if, if, if you put thirty-one thousand dollars away a year. And in fifteen years' time, council decided to research going up a second height. Then we could use that reserve to pay for that uh. Change, because he said that would cost about a hundred thousand.
Right.
Two hundred thousand dollars at that point in time.
My answer to that is that because the capacity re- report is what dictates what you have to reserve. So if, say, in ten years that we do do the investigation, da, 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 and it's proven that your. Uh, your contribution is fifty years out now, instead of twenty-five years out. It would be my understanding that council would be able to divert monies from that reserve at that moment.
Expansion.
As long as that capacity report supports what your reserve is.
Right.
So you couldn't plan to use, or you can, as Anne said, can't decide wherever they want to put their reserves, but you. Essentially, you wouldn't know what the capacity result would be until he's done the study. It's like, it's over a hundred thousand, but, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I might have a bit of confusion here, but I believe that he was referring to that study that you're all speaking of. As moving the landfill around on the property, not going vertical, I believe he said going vertical, you're allowed in the current certificate.
Right.
Oh, okay, good, that's good, okay, that's.
I could be mistaken, I did re-watch the video the other day, but I'm.
Engineering just for stabilization.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But not.
It's not expand cost.
Okay, gotcha.
And as Anne did say, the current capacity report does say twenty-five years, so in order for that to change.
He has to say.
He has to say it, and it is what BDO or, and, and the auditor also looks for that landfill capacity study in order to do the audit. They demand that, actually, as you are aware, that was late also, so I had to work on getting that back. They have been demanding that report now over two years, so they look to that report in order to do your audit. Where the dollar value, wh- whether you agree or not, it will be mentioned in the audit what your landfill capacity cost will be. And the number of years that that study predicts, and then it will weigh your uh contribution to the reserve against what all of those recommendations are saying.
Gotcha.
So essentially, I think what the bottom line is, is that we would have to have the engineer to provide us a report that says, oh no. You have fifty years' capacity, as long as you do these following thing.
But I think it's probably, it's a significant enough situation that here's, he, he sits there and says, here's your report, says twenty-five. But no problem, you can go to fifty, he, he said that.
Right.
So I think that it um warrants a revisit with perhaps Knight Peacehold and say, can we have some clarification on. Your, your herbal report and discussion versus the planet, and maybe there's some middle ground for a new report. Instead of going ahead with what may be significantly incorrect.
Right.
One more final point, I did, so that you know, he did offer to come around and that is a cost, at a cost of forty-five hundred dollars. Just to close that one.
Come around, what are you?
He said that he would bring the ball in the tour and uh provide a report after, so I asked for the quote and that cost would be forty-five hundred dollars.
Right, but I don't know if that's related, that's in a tour, but that goes and talking about things.
The cost, right, look at the cost of that alone, so.
We'll see.
Yeah.
I see that, yeah, we can reach out to counselor to uh. Reconfirm his findings and if he has movement on those findings.
Gotcha, um, another comment, if I may, on the bag, clear bag, black bag front, I would, I am personally not a fan of. Forcing our residents to make a decision, I would, on that, I would be. Uh, I would applaud people that want to use clear bags and, and they could proudly use the, the clear bags, but. If someone, I, I love the idea of encouraging people, but I don't like the idea of mandating it. Uh, and I'm going to suggest it's for a, a mayor Gould suggestion of, you really have to be analyzing your, these clear bags, or what's the point? And that's the privacy issue, I just don't love the idea of people poking through your garbage bags, so. I think that, that a, a program that encourages recycling, that continues to encourage is good without mandating it in terms of uh the clear bag.
And to answer that question also, it's, it makes it difficult when we have a depot only situation. Uh, if you lived where there was garbage pickup, uh they would kindly leave that on your curb and you would not be disposing of it. So that's what makes it also difficult in a depot, so when a garbage truck drives around and picks up your refuse and your recycling, if it's not sorted properly. You get a kind little sticker on your bin that says, uh, you haven't recycled properly. And you get a little sticker on your garbage bag that says it's not in a clear bag, or you do have recycling material in your clear bag, and they leave it on the curb. So it makes it very difficult in a depot to mandate that clear bag system. And with the privacy issue, I disagree when, if we were to rewrite bylaw that. You're allowed personal bags in there, so obviously you don't wanna put your washroom uh refuse in a clear bag, you don't need everybody seeing that. However. I don't see the purpose of looking at people's garbage.
But the, you just ask to do inspect.
No, I do, I do understand for the inspection, so I mean, the common are just walking around, if you're recycling properly. The only thing that's probably in your garbage is organics, uh no paper that indicates who, where it's from and who it was. Um, there would be no time for you personally, if you recycle properly, and. And like I said, there's also that health reasoning, the hazardous waste freezing, uh there's other reasoning. And once it hits the ground, it's the property of the, the municipality. But I can't understand where at first it may gross people out to think like I'm bringing all my garbage in a clear bag. Uh, because I have gross garbage going to the landfill, putting.
May, maybe it's more of a culture change than forcing people to use clear bags, you know, uh. Many industries are going towards zero landfill. Uh, manufacturing, you know, in. Rather than doing things the way we've always done them, we have to kind of steer our community in a different direction. And um, committee made up of citizens is. It might get more buy-in and some out of the box thinking as well. Culture change, not rules, not more rules that can't be enforced. Um, it's gonna take time and, and to shift people's thinking. And we can do it, we don't have to resign ourselves to, you know, we're stuck with doing it the way we've always done it.
Great, thank you, Council Lattimer and Councilor Mattson for your comments, I'd just like to say that this resolution here is not. To do anything about clear bags or bylaws or anything, this is to establish a committee. Just to make recommendations to move forward, and then your report is giving some direction to that. And I'm sure uh everyone at council, as this committee was formed, if it is formed, would be able to give direction to that. Or suggestions to that committee as well.
Right, like I appreciate the input from council, it does provide a, a committee when it is formed. Uh, you know, not all of council agrees to a clear bag system or a clear bag program, uh perhaps like. There is better to be education than strengthen rules, as the Council Lattimer said.
Right.
However, through the committee and through recommendations to council, more discussion is to be had.
Right, exactly, and that is what the resolution states, and it, and, and very positively so, Anne, so, sorry, Councilman.
I just was gonna get in on some comments, oh, I mean, I know it's long, but, okay, we have a massive report here, I mean.
Kind of start right, like, like two pages.
I mean, I do as quick as possible, um but the, the, we have a big topic and uh I can talk specifically with the resolution here too. I mean, I do as quick as possible, but we have a big topic and I can talk specifically with the resolution here too. I'm just gonna talk to the resolution. I'm gonna forget some of the stuff and if the committee's formed, I'll, I'll input ideas in fashion. I think there's a little bit of inconsistency in the report that he gave with the, I understand the report is twenty five years, but his verbal was a little different than the paper. I don't understand we're working off the paper. I'm just, it's my belief to, to, and my understanding with what I know is that I think the, when we're talking about budgeting eleven thousand dollars in a bit towards this, that we do that during a budget discussion, in my opinion, it should come as a budget thing.
And it's not being passed here. That isn't part of the, this is just a recognition of the report of the.
I'd like to suggest, I, I agree with Council.
It says it's being done.
Yeah, it should say, whereas the municipality of Calvin, whereas there, there's a recommendation that the municipality will need to increase at budget time.
This is what I would like to put as a motion. I see this as a, as a budget discussion, in my opinion.
So I'd like to call to the.
If I can oppose an amendment to include that, I'd like to support the motion.
All right. And so there was a motion on the floor from Council Grant to amend the motion over the second.
And it's not the motion actually that you're amending because of Ann's report. Yeah, we'll just be sure. It's Ann's report that says that her recommendation is that municipality will need to increase the cost. Oh, the motion, the motion, you're right, the motion.
Specifically, it says we're committing these funds and, and that's fine if the rest.
Consider in budget, consider that budget discussion.
That's what I would like to.
So again, I need a mover and a second to take Council Grant's motion, so. Yeah, you can move your own motion and Councilor Mattson seconds it. Can you give us the?
Yep, so that one line on the second page. And whereas the municipality consider in its budget deliberations, in its twenty twenty five budget deliberations, the need to increase.
Yes, that's what I suggested. Just didn't Ann say that that was required under some legislation?
It is required, but however, it could be further discussed once we bring forward our budgets for environmental.
Well, I'm saying the eleven thousand, but the nine hundred thousand that is required and how we deal with it.
It is required through the separate accounting. However, with Council Mattson bringing it forward, well, maybe we could go fifty more years if we go up higher, et cetera. So there could be other considerations before a complete determination by council.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor. It's moved and seconded. All in favor? And so that amendment is carried.
I could talk for another hour, but most people are trying.
Oh, wait, okay, sorry, you didn't read the whole bylaw?
I haven't. Okay, so that was the end of your comments?
Basically, yeah, that addresses my biggest concern.
And I'd just like to reemphasize that I am not against clear bags. I don't think that it's a bad idea. In fact, I think it's a good idea and I have no problem with buying them and using them myself personally and encouraging other people in township to use it. Like Council Lattimer, I would like to see more re-education than enforcement of, of regulations where possible. And I think what I was trying to get across is if we had inspection of bags currently and it is seventy percent and then staff comes back and says, well, there's still, these people just refuse to do this. Well, then it, it might be necessary to enforce. But maybe if people are getting inspected and they are told, well, geez, you know, we really need you to start using clear bags, we can create compliance through education as much as we can. So that was just, I'm not against them at all. I think it's a good idea. And I think it would be helpful if we can reduce the amount of waste that goes over the edge any way we can.
And just to clarify what we're voting on, because it's another issue that I'm seeing now, I believe, is that, you know, when you look at the third last section, it says we basically will be implementing, we will be enforcing clear bags. And I know that some, you know, myself included, there seems to be some hesitancy on, on doing that. So I would likely propose maybe another amendment or for another point of order. And.
Actually, if, if I may, we do have a bylaw right now that says we should be using clear bags. And this does not, this motion does not say that there, we're imposing a fine to people for not using them. We're just continuing with the bylaw that we have.
Correct.
So I don't think we need to amend this, but.
So I just clarify if we pass this, as you know, it's just gonna, you know, our staff gonna handle this section or we're going to be refusing.
I will assure the council that, like we discussed, the promotional, educational, we're going to go through that and identify the, the reasoning behind the promotion of education.
Right.
Because there is no ability to enforce the bylaw without rewriting a bylaw, councillor.
Okay, so right now we have this bylaw in place. And if we wanted to say there wasn't a clear bag, you'd have to rewrite this bylaw that's already in existence to say, no, we want to repeal that. And I don't think, I want to do that. That's not.
Well, and that's why I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with, with the resolution. That's.
Just one point of comment, the landfill staff are going to be at the forefront of all of this and that's never easy. Just like it's not easy for the rest of us, you know, whether it's Ann, myself, you know, Trish or, or now Sylvia. The bylaws are what provides us with your direction.
Right.
So if your direction is to do something different, then we need to change bylaws.
Right.
That's what staff, when, you know, the consumer comes in and complains to us about the cost of something or that we're, you know, behaving in a particular way, the only thing that we have to go by is bylaw. So unlike the bylaws changes.
There is a bylaw on the books right now that says we should be using clear bags.
And we're not saying this, in this motion, that we strictly enforce it, but there's.
I just, I'm just checking to see, you know, how that's gonna proceed because there is some mixed. And, and I think it's a discussion to be had moving forward, right? And that's part of the committee and everything. I just don't want to, you know, come down with an iron fist by accident.
Right.
Which is not what's happening.
Any other questions, comments? All right, let's, let's move on to.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Just on that, you're gonna reach out to Knight Peacehold and find out that, because I think that's, that's significant to the whole report. If we have twenty five years or twice that, it's terribly, it, it, it doesn't diminish the need to recycle in any way, shape or form, but it gives us way more wiggle room and space. So I think that's quite material too. A lot of the. So is there a way that we can just bring this whole thing back and with that, with the clarification?
Or I think we just add to it that Knight Peacehold, he approached to, however that word is, to.
To clarify or supposed to.
What he said verbally does not match.
Yes.
Said in his official report, that is, that guides everything financially.
All right, so what are you, so if I didn't clarify verbal comments, maybe. Correct me if I'm wrong here, but we're saying that the increase in the budget be held until the budget discussions.
Yes.
Which gives us the latitude to approach Knight Peacehold without change. Because it doesn't say anything in here that we are going to do that. In fact, it says we're not going to do that until budget. So therefore you have that latitude to approach Knight Peacehold. Am I correct?
But I'm just thinking, you know, about what Council Mattson is saying and we all heard Knight Peacehold say something very different and very different than what is in the report. Fifty years is a lot different than twenty five. So why mention it verbally if you're not willing to put it in writing?
Right.
And so he either needs to retract the fifty years or put it in to the report. I completely understand your take on that because we're talking about dollars and it's like twenty five years, it's a lot of twenty five years. It changes the numbers.
No, we don't need to change this resolution because the resolution already states that we're not doing the eleven thousand dollars at this point in time. We're doing it at the budget and then at the budget, we have the authority to.
Address the concern.
Address the concern that, that Councilor Mattson has brought forward.
As well as, since Councilor Mattson has brought it forward, obviously we would investigate the, the verbal contradiction to the written to ensure we are being fiscally responsible in presenting the budget to council.
So great thing that you brought forward. Absolutely. All right. If there's no further discussion, going once, going twice, going three times, the, the motion reads extending the life of the landfill and financial obligations. Whereas moved by Councilor Mattson and seconded by Councilor Lattimer, at a council meeting on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, the environmental engineer provided counsel with the capacity study of the municipality, the municipality's landfill and BDO provided the twenty twenty three draft financials. And whereas it was found that the landfill will be at capacity in twenty five years in writing at a cost of nine hundred and seventy two thousand, three hundred and three dollars at the continued division rate. And furthermore, the, the BDO described the legal obligation for the municipality to budget for the retirement obligation of the asset as per the Public Sector Accounting Board. And whereas council consider in the twenty twenty five budget deliberations, the need to increase the cost of the reserve for closure and post-closure of eleven thousand dollars in the twenty twenty five budget to cover its financial obligation. And furthermore, discussions of methods to prolong the life of the landfill were had and the public works superintendent provided reports to council for review. And furthermore, the public work superintendent recommends an educational and promotional period for clear bag waste entering the landfill be implemented in conjunction with the bylaw, twenty twenty four dash forty six being a bylaw to establish and maintain a system of disposal of waste and other refuse to be reviewed. And furthermore, that a committee be formed to create a waste management plan and that the committee will be named the Environmental Advisory Committee and that the terms of reference of this committee be prepared for the next council meeting. Be hereby resolved that the council, the municipality of Calvin approves this recommendation and appoints. The only person who's come forward is Council Lattimer. Is there anybody else who would like to serve on this committee instead of Council Lattimer? Going once, going twice, going three times, that the recommendation and appoints Council Lattimer to chair the Environmental Advisory Committee. Any last discussions just before I move forward? All those.
I just want to make, I just want to be sure because on my clear bag issue, it's determining how, how I would support or not. So is anything going to change along the clear bag front going forward with this?
There's going to be promotion and education.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
If for some reason, Councilor Lattimer is unable to fulfill the position, I would be willing to sit down.
Okay, duly noted.
Well, I know it's restricted for Friday. It might be an impact. Opening the door, I think he wants.
Okay, well duly noted that you've offered in, in case Council Lattimer cannot. So call us to vote. All those in favor? Unanimously carried. There you go, Ann. You convinced everybody.
I just want to assure that sitting in this room and you hear councils' views, obviously to go out and do the opposite would not be the wisest decision.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so next item on the agenda is boards and committees. North Bay Conservation Authority, Councilor Morton, anything verbally to report?
Next meeting is tomorrow night. I'll report next.
All right, thank you. He's the district planning board. We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. So anything they wanted to add? I can say some things, but I'll just leave until the next meeting. And the physicians recruitment, our next meeting is on February the fourteenth. And there are some things we're working on, but nothing to report at this time. OPP detachment board, Councilor Grant.
Sent a couple of comments. Last board meeting, we were trying to get payment from various municipalities and I don't know if I could just ask Kelvin to distribute the payment to the board.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, and they said, I just thought it was interesting and just mentioned, you know, it's one of the only boards doing population based. So I thought that was great and I'm glad that we can go forward with that because I think it's the ideal way. There's talk of a conference that they would like members to attend. The board agreed that the board will not fund the conference. I, I have an email. I will share this with you at a later date. But anyway, I'll share it at a later date, but there is a conference, but it would be the responsibility of each individual municipality on whether or not they wanted to send a member. So that will be forthcoming. We changed the name to Madowal Regional Police Services Board. See, my name changed. That's not the official name. The municipal safety and wellness plan will need to be updated and posted. What's mentioned that's created by municipalities. So it's something that's, we'll work on.
It's severely overdue, right?
Yes, it is. It is, but you know, the, the board is really, the board is still a secretary. And, you know, we have, we've, we've, it's now becoming funded. Basically, we're just now collecting revenues, so we're just now gaining a membership. So it's, it's a, it's a board that is slowly moving forward. Is, is, you know, just so everyone's aware of what's going on, it's, it's slowly progressing to fill some of this roles. And it's not doing it rapidly just due to labor constraint and, you know, issues with the secretary and whatnot. So. Yeah. I think if there's anything else that you guys interested in, but yeah, we're just, we're just slowly moving forward. So we'll see what the next report brings, but you know, it's not like there's going to be any big fireworks or anything for a while. But we're just working on things and trying to figure it out, so.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Just for budgetary purposes, if that reported to and were expected to contribute, can you maybe try to get that figured to us before budget time?
Yeah, it should like, there's, there's a few different, there's a few different reports, there's two. It's that one, that's, it's, and then there's another one and it, they're just basically works in progress, like. And I don't, I, I don't suspect that these things are gonna happen. There, there doesn't seem to be an urgency for them tomorrow. It's just like, you know, on the radar. So I'll keep counsel on it, you know, if there's any hard deadlines or something of any sort, but just a recognition that there's work to do and there's a recognition that it's not gonna happen instantly. That seems to be the, the feel.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions for Councilor Grant? All right, so the last one is, well, the Canadian College Center, we. No, we haven't had sense, so. And last but not least is the Castle Home Exit Strategy Meeting. Both the CAO and I attended this meeting and it was, it was eventful, to say the least. One thing that I'll start off by mentioning is a little piece of good news, I suppose. And that is that it was made clear that two calculations were available to the Castle Home Board as far as the apportionment of funds. And the, the apportionment of funds is done by a weighted assessment. And the way the weighted assessment works is that we would pay twice as much per resident as say the town of, of Madowal would pay. I was always concerned that the final mortgage payment would be made permanent on the twenty twenty seventh in two years' time, at which time that would be locked in and we would be paying at that rate for the next thirty years. Um what they have agreed now to do is that the uh the the weighted assessment will be recalculated every year. For the next thirty years.
Two years behind.
Two years behind. And so what that means is that if we did suffer a big change in revenue. And Madawal had a massive growth in revenue, then their weighted assessment would go up. That they would pay double the amount and we would pay much less. So in other words. The weighted assessment will be reevaluated every year on the mortgage payment instead of being calculated once and held for the entire term. So that takes away the threat. It doesn't matter if the pipeline goes away. It doesn't matter if uh we lose Columbia Forest Products. Because that'll change the way the weighted assessment is calculated and the amount that Calvin has to pay will be related to. What the current economic situation is. However, that being said, there's still the idea that the interest rate. Will be fixed in twenty twenty-seven and that's what we will pay for the next thirty years. Regardless of what happens with the interest. It's not a floating rate loan. As John will understand, it's calculated. And their financial officer felt that all indications are that that'll wind up at about four point five percent. So if the existing one hundred and twenty-one million dollars. Uh it is the figure that is arrived at in two years' time. Four point five percent interest will be added and that will be calculated and fixed for the remaining term. We can't prepay it, pay off the interest rate. It's just the way the 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 loan is being set up. So that's, it's good news that we we can't get stuck paying a a higher amount than what we can uh expect. Right now, our our amount could go down because our proportion amount could decline given economic conditions. At the meeting, we all talked about what about the hundred twenty-one million dollars? What are we gonna do here? Because regardless, it's unsustainable for most of the municipalities. And so they formed a a committee uh to bring forward a. A complaint, if you will, to the provincial government saying that we just can't afford to do this. And uh I volunteered to to join that committee. The committee is being chaired by uh Mayor Peter Chirico of North Bay. And he made it very, very, very clear that he is only willing in discussing getting additional funding from provincial government and not in. In uh anything else, which would mean not in removing our. Status on the board, not changing the provincial legislation from a municipal board to an another board. So it became very clear where the players were starting to play out. Um right now, we're in the middle of an election. So it's unlikely that we're gonna get a response from the provincial government when we go hat in hand and say, well, we want more funding. Um we have other irons in the fire, as you all know, and uh. I've spoken with uh uh. The our representative on the Castle Home Board, which is uh Bob Corrigo, and I've asked him to be. More diligent in reporting to Calvin Township Council. As to how these other projects that we're dealing with are moving forward. And uh. Uh I, when we were at the meeting, Donna, is. Ask, say what you asked, or did I leave that?
A number of things.
Well, I've, we asked a number of questions that. I asked questions that didn't make me popular with the group, but I'm sure Donna asked questions that made.
People, people are with the group.
I know they didn't.
With the group. I mean, there, and you must be clear, uh. There was a question posed, one of the attend items that we learned when we started up the meeting was, what is the impact of the municipalities who want to exit out? They wanted to have open discussion amongst those who aren't often out looking to exit. And uh so they wanted us to answer that question and they wanted their, they meaning Castle Home Board of Directors and its management. And they wanted to know what the room felt the impact of the four municipalities impacting might be. And of course, no one spoke, so I stood up the microphone and said, well, maybe you can help us understand what the impact. One of us leaving might be if you shared with us because we're not privy to it, the impact of South Algonquin having been. Given a deal of some sort that we're not privy to. And the response.
And everyone sort of, oh, no.
And the response was they weren't aware of a deal that had been made. And so then I uh my follow-up question was. So you're telling us that South Algonquin has not been given a time to not pay. I do recall when I wasn't involved in this community, but uh in a different capacity when the four tried to not pay. And what happened at that time, they're looking. Um and the answer to that question was they are not aware of any agreement that has been made. So then I posed another question. You're telling me that they're still being billed. And the answer was, probably that's just. So we still are not aware of whether, we originally all there's no deal that's been made with South Algonquin, however, that's very um different than what we heard in other very. In other circles that are very reliable.
Right.
I don't remember what else I asked, but there was a lot, a lot of talking.
It was, it was uh, it was a. Little bit of tension in in the room and uh I know that one of the other municipalities. Really addressed the issue of castle arms and the north tower, which. I felt was really good, that should be addressed. Um but we couldn't talk about too much because we were told that there was conflict of interest and. It it and then, of course, uh. Yeah, so and it was sort of brought back that the only thing we were there to discuss was uh. Uh additional funding from the province regarding the hundred twenty-one million dollars. So a a resolution was passed that this committee would be formed and that within two weeks. We would get back to the committee from each municipality to say what the impact would be on our residents. If this hundred twenty-one million dollars, and I I I it drives me crazy that they keep saying a hundred twenty-one million dollars. But then we all know that that it's plus interest, plus interest, but. And let's be honest here, it's almost a quarter of a billion dollars. With with interest and uh they wanted each municipality to come forward and say, okay, this is what is gonna cost our residents. If this plan goes forward.
Know the answer to that question?
And that's what the C O said to me is they already know the answer to the question. So why are they asking each municipality to do this? And uh the only thing I can think of is that. They they want each municipality say, hey, it's gonna hurt us this amount so that it's a little bit of additional public pressure rather than. The CFO of uh the board saying, well, it's gonna cost each municipality this much. But if you remember in our presentation. They said this is what it's gonna cost Calvin. And if if you remember that presentation online that they that they did. In year twenty-five to year thirty, it's a hundred thousand dollars a year plus the interest. So um the interest. Am I out of line, John, in saying it's fifty percent? A hundred, like, so if it's a hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna be close to two hundred thousand dollars a year for the 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 township of Calvin in.
Yeah, that's at like four point five percent or something. And like as you go up, so I like, I'm just. My memory serves me right, I like six percent. It's like, it's six point five is three times the amount.
And the the interest rate is not guaranteed, you know, it's only guaranteed for the first twenty-five.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. It's a thing doubling, I think, is very reasonable, slightly more.
So anyway, we have to prepare these numbers and then I will have to go back to a meeting, which is gonna be chaired by Mayor Peter Cherico. And uh Gail DeGonge was there for Chisholm and. And and, well, can we not?
Yeah, no, no, I'm just.
Yeah, and and it's some some uh councillors from uh. Well, East Parish had two councillors that were going to be on the committee. So uh we'll we'll leave and see what we can present to the uh. So to sum up the report. What might wind up happening here is we might wind up getting some uh money from uh the provincial government and we might not. And we have to decide again how we wanna continue on or just say, okay, well, that's it. And that that'll be up to council.
And with the election, as you said, coming up, at Castle Home, we did speak about the experience since the build has been planned. And just the turnover of different uh ministers at the long-term health care. And that we should probably expect that that would happen again. And they talked about the frustration of having to go to a new minister. You know, so often to plead their case. So here they were into an election now and it's most likely that there will be a new minister and they'll be starting over again. From scratch to explain the situation to a new minister.
Any questions? Donna did a really good job, I have to tell you, at the meeting. Um I I was really impressed. That she wasn't afraid to speak up and cross some.
Amongst my many friends.
Uh crossing uncomfortable bridges. And I was surprised at some of the other participants at this meeting who. Are very vocal otherwise, but just kind of sat there quietly and said nothing, so. I was glad that we were there together. It's worked out well. Anyway. That's the end of the uh committees' reports.
So just texting some.
Yes, so a resolution. Excuse me. Excuse me, a resolution now therefore be resolved. Uh this is to accept the agency's boards. I need to move on to the seconder. Councilor Grant, Councilor Manson, now therefore be resolved that the council for the corporation of the municipality of Calvin accepts. The agency's boards, committees, verbal reports and other minutes provided by council members at this meeting where they were submitted. All in favor? That motion is carried. Councilor Grant. So uh we are then at moving into a closed meeting moved by. Okay, Councilor Morton, seconded by Councilor Manson. Um now therefore be resolved that the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin moving to closed session at eight forty-three P M. To discuss litigation or potential litigation, uh including matters before administration uh administrative tribunals affecting. The municipality and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. All those in favor? Okay, that is carried and we are going into closed session. Thank you uh. Uh everyone who.